Welcome to the Bradenton City Council meeting Wednesday, March 8th, 2023, 8:30 at City Hall Chambers. At this time, we will ask Minister Jerry Wicker with the Manatee Life Church to come forward and give us our prayer, and we'll do the pledge. Please stand and thank you Pastor for being here. Good morning.
My pleasure to be here. Let's pray. Good and gracious God, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us, and to treat all with reverence that your creation deserves. Renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of all. We ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live, work, and play. Grant them and us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May they and we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May they and we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. This we pray, in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good and right and true, as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. May it be so. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. You'll join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
Good morning. We have a proclamation this morning, which I'll read on behalf of the mayor. Safe Soil Day, March 21st, 2023. Whereas Safe Soil is a global movement launched by Sadhguru, uniting world leaders, visionaries, influencers, and citizens of all nations behind a common purpose, to restore and safeguard the world soil. Whereas Safe Soil aims to address the global soil crisis, recognizing that 52% of the world's agricultural soils are already degraded, and by 2050, 90% of the earth's soil could be degraded. Whereas addressing soil degradation, excuse me, issues would bring solutions for the loss of biodiversity, nutritional deficiencies, food security, water scarcity, climate change, and mass migration. Whereas the proposed solution is advocate for policies across all nations towards soil restoration and aim to increase organic content in agricultural soil to a minimum of 3% to 6%. And whereas, in an effort to raise awareness and activate support from leaders and citizens alike, Sadhguru was on a 30,000-kilometer journey as a lone motorcyclist, covering 27 nations over 100 days since March 2022. And whereas, the city wishes to participate in creating bright futures for our children and the future of our planet. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, as mayor of the city of Bradenton, Florida, to hereby proclaim March 21st, 2023, as Safe Soil Day in Bradenton, and urge all citizens to be part of the Safe Soil Movement to support policies towards soil restoration. Signed, Jean Brown, Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have somebody here to accept the proclamation? Come on up. Bring your whole group if you want. So, do we have somebody to take a picture today? Okay, all right. Welcome, and you have a few words you want to say?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the pastor had said, it's time for us all to speak up, and this global movement for Safe Soil is so critical. Until we started reading the details about what's happening to the quality of our soil and how it impacts all, so many ecological issues, we realized that we need to start with something foundational. Foundational like the soil, the soil that we come from, the soil that we go back to. So with those few words, we appreciate the city of Bradenton and Mayor Brown for taking a, to speak up and to wherever you can to support the legislation and the community activities, to make the awareness there and to make this a positive response to the crisis that's happening.
Right, and I know that obviously, we hear it every year about Farm City Week, and that's the one week that our, you know, Mr. Garrison comes in every year for many, many years and talks about the importance of our farmers. And, you know, and obviously, the soil is one of the most important things to those farmers, so we appreciate doing it and you doing it and are able to continue just to educate people. It's the most important, how we can do, the little bit we can do as an individual. So, thank you for being here and what you do in the council comments. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Did you get a picture? Okay, so turn around and hold it up, and we'll just thank you for that. Thank you very much. Have a nice day. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Next, we have a presentation by Folly Bryant and Willis Smith on Fire Station 2.
Thank you. Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, and the council, we have a presentation coming up from Folly Bryant and Willis Smith, who is our pre-construction services provider, and Brett Raymaker with Willis Smith is going, and Steve Paget with Folly Bryant are going to give a presentation. But I thought it's important to set it up a little bit about where we're at. And the project regarding Fire Station 2, as you all know, has been in the works, and we funded a large portion of it. Bradenton Fire Rescue, including Chief Gear and Assistant Chief Kennedy have been involved in that, Public Works Director and Project Development Director, Mr. McClellan, along with the A&amp;E team. And we've recently bought in, again, Willis Smith to give us an idea of pricing, really where we're at, as we looked at that 64th Street site. And it's a good location generally for Eastside Fire Service, for sure. But the first part of the process was looking at the location of the site itself, the layout, the positioning, the traffic engineering for ingress, egress to the site, and how it fits into the programmatic needs of the department, as well as the site and associated issues, onsite retention, and a host of other issues. And so, the next step was massing. Positioning of the buildings themselves, how can they basically meet the programmatic needs of the department as it relates to the services that are going to be provided, the equipment that's going to be used, the personnel that'll be housed and deployed out of that location and the like. And so, you kind of put together what's called schematic, as you probably all heard. And we reached that point, and at that point, basically, we asked Willis Smith, and as you all remember, I received authorization to engage them in doing some pre-construction services. One of the first tasks was to look at what we had recently built, being Station 3 out on 59th Street, and compare the cost of that station with what it would cost to build the same station in today's construction dollars in inflationary times and the like. And they've done some of that. And after that, basically, we tried to look at where we are at in taking the information to council, and that's really what the purpose of today's presentation is. We want to talk about cost estimates, about this building is larger, considerably larger than Station 3, where the cost goes into a station, whether it's the exterior, the interior, programmatic needs, specialty equipment, things like that, and then pricing. And the reason why is that when we go to the next step of architecture and engineering, we need to know what the appetite is for council on what type of station they want to build. And I don't want to say it's the Pinto or the Cadillac, but there's the economy, the standard, and the more elaborate, I think, is what we're going to be looking at. And that always is a policy decision that should be vested in council. So that's why we're here today. I'm going to invite up Folly Bryant. Mr. Steve Paget is going to be the lead partner, architect on the project, and Brett Raymaker from Willis Smith and their folks.
Jim, I'll take it from there. And Christie Woods is with us as well. I apologize for not introducing her. Yep.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Brett Raymaker, Vice President and Project Executive with Willis Smith Construction.
Good morning. Christie Woods, Folly Bryant, Senior Project Manager.
And then also with us, we have Steve Paget from Folly Bryant, and Robbie Gronback, who is our Director of Preconstruction at Willis Smith as well.
If you could probably, when you talk, just come closer to the microphone.
Sure, absolutely. Can I forward the, touch screen?
Is this touchscreen, guys?
No, Jim will show you there.
There we go. So we really just wanted to give you an overview of some models to give you an idea basis of where to start, so that you could give input into this RFP that's going to be going out. So we'll show you a range of price points. We won't get too much into the specifics, but at least enough information to give you an idea and then decide on where we want to go from there.
If at any point you all have any questions, you know, feel free to stop and ask me. I think one of the easiest things for us to do is to be able to show you visually. And what I've done is shown you some past fire stations that we have built, to kind of give you an idea of what we will call today kind of the economy versus the standard. Now understand that the standard is going to be on the higher end, and there is the opportunity to do a hybrid between the economy and the standard to, you know, find a price point that's somewhere in between. As you can see here, are two exterior elevations of two of the fire stations. The top one, we are going to call, again, the economy, and the bottom one, we are going to call the standard. The bottom one's going to be Fire Station 86 down in the city of Northport, and the top one is going to be for East Manatee. Now, as we talk about the comparisons between the two, understand that the basic exterior is going to be CMU with a stucco painted finish. It's going to have a wood truss roof system with typically a standard metal roof. You're going to have limited storefront and glass on your exterior elevations, and your apparatus doors are going to be without glass, so allowing no light or visual sightlines into the apparatus bays, and there's no training elements that we incorporate within the structure. Many of the fire stations that we do build now actually can have a training element included into it, and that is typically going to be a training tower. Now, on the standard exterior, you're going to see a CMU with what we call a rain screen system. So a rain screen system can be brick, block, it could be stone, it can also be metal or hardy siding. You're typically going to have a metal truss or a steel roof framing system. You're going to have a higher-end metal roof, which typically means that you're going to have more color options. You're going to have more storefront and glass on your exterior elevations, and your apparatus doors are going to have typically glass lights, and you'll implement that training element.
And as we get further along, we will show you our examples as it relates to the standard exterior model.
Some additional comparisons. As you can see, the top, again, we'll call the economy model. It's going to be more builder-grade materials. The kitchen in the middle picture, as you can see, is going to be more residential-style kitchen. You know, you're going to have a standard range with a standard exhaust hood. There's not going to be any fancy fire suppression within that. You also have a standard range of finishes, as far as your selections of finished materials. And then you'll also look into the restrooms, see more of the basic style, utilitarian, you know, type finishes in there. Once you get into the standard range or the higher range, you're going to see higher-grade materials, you're going to have more selections on your finishes, you're going to get into a fancier kitchen that's going to be more commercial grade, you're going to have, you know, large gas fire cooktop stoves, you're going to have a commercial hood with Ansel fire suppression systems, you're going to have commercial fast-wash dishwashers. And then as you look into the restrooms, you're also going to see, you know, higher-end finishes in there, full height tile sometimes. You'll look at some of the, you know, branding elements that you can put also within, you know, some of your interior finishes. When we start to talk about mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems, it's going to be more difficult to be able to show you that in pictures, so we'll talk briefly about it. You know, on the mechanical side, when you look at an economy station, it's going to be closer to what you will see in a residential application. You know, you're going to have standard split DX systems. The exhaust systems that are in the apparatus bay are going to be tied to the operation of the overhead door, so they automatically turn on. When you get into the higher end of the mechanical, they're going to be more complicated, more flexibility. Typically, you can get some better efficiency out of the units, but you get into, you know, VRF systems, more complicated zoned style systems. And then, in the apparatus bays, you get into these noxious fume detection systems that will only turn on the exhaust fans when and if needed. And then we get into plumbing, we look at standard builder-grade material for the economy side, smaller trench drains in the apparatus bays. And on the plumbing side for the standard, you can get into some hot water solar systems and larger trench drains in the bays. And as far as electrical, the generator on the economy side's typically only going to support life safety needs. On the standard side, you're going to be running pretty much 100% of all your electrical appliances and outlets via the generator power. And then also on the electrical side, code-compliant lighting, where on the standard side, you're going to get into more daylight harvesting. So talking briefly about numbers, you know, economy-wise, square foot, $350 to $400 a square foot, and on the standard, you're about $550 to $600 a square foot, almost a $200 delta. And again, understanding that you can do a hybrid between these two to get a price point in between. Now, this is very important, so please take note. When we are talking these square foot cost numbers, we are talking specifically about vertical construction. So think about it from foundations up to the roof. Items that this does not include is going to be site work cost. That can be a temporary station, the demo of an existing station, site of improvement, DOT signaling if needed. It doesn't include soft costs. That's survey, testing, pre-construction services, general conditions, design, permits, and impact fees. And then the below-the-line cost, you know, these are costs that are contractor contingency, owner contingency, general liability insurance, builder's risk insurance, payment and performance bond, and CM fee. Now, the reason that we try to do the cost per square foot as sticks and bricks, that is the easiest way that we can compare one station to another. The outliers will come into play with, you know, how big the site is, the type of improvements on the site, if there's an existing or temporary station that's needed. So again, please understand that if there are any questions between cost per square foot and all-in cost, that, you know, we're happy to make that clear. But I don't want anybody here today to think that they can look at a standard, take $600 a square foot, multiply that by the square foot, and that's going to be an all-in construction cost. That's just a vertical, sticks and bricks cost.
So these were the options that we had presented for the standard. This is what I would call kind of the base model, standard options. You've still got the storefront, the cladding materials, the bay doors with the glass. It's got architectural features that bring interest to the building, makes it a statement piece for the city. This is another view of the same, option A.
Quick question for you. Where do you think that our Fire Station 3 would fall in with the standard and economy?
Yeah, personally, I have not toward that station. So you're probably better than.
In between.
No, because that kitchen looked like that.
Yeah. What I'm saying, there's a hybrid. Would Chief, Chief, would you say a hybrid? Hold on one second, let me ask the chief, so we can get some concept here. Would you say that it's kind of a hybrid in some areas?
Station 3 was more, I'd lean more towards the economy style and somewhat of a hybrid. All right, so we cover all the safety needs and all the basic needs, but really, when it comes down to the interior finishes, you know, we put the minimum, like, requirement in the kitchen for like fire suppression, you know, just for code. We didn't do anything above and beyond extravagant on any of the interior finishes, you know, not by choice. A lot of it came down to what was available, you know, at that time. So I'd put it somewhere economy. I'd lean towards economy with Station 3. And really, you know, what they're explaining here is really a good concept of there's a few things that I think that we need to enhance just a little bit, just because you're looking at a, you know, 40- or 50-year building, you know, that houses people 24/7. So that's kind of what I think we're looking for, and we're not, you know, trying to, you know, build, you know, something that's overly extravagant. I think we're looking for a good hybrid model. And I think Jim or even Rob could correct me on that if need be.
All right, thank you.
But, you know, there's going to be the basic, some safety needs we need, and I think we're there. But really, it comes down to what the council and you, the mayor, think that we need to hit for this being a good piece coming into the city, and it's really going to be there for, you know.
A long time.
A long time. So it's going to be that first impression of what's coming in. So that's kind of.
All right, thank you. Now, I just thought that was important to kind of get that for everyone to hear while we're going through the process. Thank you.
And Christie, Mayor, one other item I do want to kind of highlight. Between the two options, everything is code compliant. You know, there is not a, if you're going to the economy model, you're not getting something that is not going to be as stout when it comes to, you know, survivability with the windstorms that we do have. Regardless of what model, they're going to be built to what they consider Level E Essential Facility.
Thank you.
Right. And it's really just putting more of the finishes to the exterior and taking a more modest approach than the interiors. So just going through the options again, this is option B. You can see we've added in a different roof type. Still play up on this tower element, we still have the glass, and they roll up doors with the glass as well. So that was the option B. This was the one that I think was most desired. And go back to option B, yes, you can take a look at that one. So any questions for us or comments on these designs, materials, finishes?
Councilwoman Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's important for the council to understand that should we have some sort of either natural disaster or, God forbid, man-made event, it's important that this building be constructed in such a way that it can be self-supporting. I think we need a full-service generator added. I don't think we need the minimum generator. One of the other things, one of the lessons that was learned from both Andrew and Katrina was that emergency services people, after a certain amount of time, cannot continue to be here without checking on their families, without their families having some sort of support. So to be able to have a commercial kitchen where we may be able to bring in families of our emergency workers, to be able to get a hot meal, take a shower, that sort of thing, I think is very important as well. I'm interested in seeing it as much of a green building as possible. I would like to see solar on it, and I want to make sure, because of the information that is coming out these days, dealing with the cancer concerns of our firefighters and paramedics from what they are exposed to, the environmental risks that they're exposed to when they are serving our community, that we make sure that we have something very similar to what we have in Station 3, where you can come in, it's a clean room, you decontaminate, and you don't take that back into the living quarters. And I'm sure that that has all been discussed, but I just want to make sure these are the things that I will be looking for.
Councilwoman Coachman?
Yes, thank you. Those were some of the points I wanted to also make, is that, you know, this is a sound building, because our first responders definitely need to be safe, so that they can operate their duties. And, but I had a question. Station 2 is going to be larger than Station 3, correct? What's the difference in the square footage?
This one is around 10,000 square feet, and I believe Fire Station 3 was 1,400, if I'm not mistaken.
14,000?
Yeah, sorry, 14,000.
Okay, all right. What was this one? I'm sorry.
Wait.
This is larger. This one's 14. This one's 14. I thought it was supposed to be larger, yeah.
So we scaled back Station 3, I'm sorry. We scaled back Station 3 back just, you know, because of probably at the time, cost and material availabilities, and really trying to stay in that economy-type model, if you will. And really with, kind of where we're at is really, you know, I thank you, Councilwoman Barnaby, about, you know, those safety aspect needs, and that's really with a hybrid model, you know, that we can stay on top of all those needs. And, you know, certain areas, we could go a little bit above, you know, the standard, but there are some areas where we do, you know, we want to stay basic, and that just has to do with the ongoing maintenance needs and, you know, so there's a lot of systems that, you know, we could, we could get in this building that we've kind of backed off of, because we want to keep that more maintenance-friendly model, if you will, for, you know, the city that comes in to help us with things, and just on the going, long-term costs of maintaining the building. So, you know, this, there's some good flexibility here, and so really, you know, it's going to be up to these folks to come up with a price point that y'all are happy with, so.
And Mayor and council, perhaps Mr. McClellan might be best to talk about it. It touches on Councilwoman Coachman's question, but this is 14,000 square feet. The Station 3 was 10,000. So you're looking at this facility being about 40% larger, fairly significant amount. But we also did some cost estimates about what it would cost to build the 10,000, so, yeah, because of construction inflation that has gone on since the point that we built that facility. Remember, we priced it well, you know, before some of this inflation hit. Jim, take it from there.
Yeah, so Jim McClellan, Director of Public Works. For Station 3, the final cost for everything came in for construction around $2.8 million. Looking at what it would take to build that same facility in today's dollars, it was more in the line of about $4.2 to $4.3 million, which also brings us to the whole process of how we're going about this. Originally, we had selected Folly Bryant to be the design engineer for the project, assuming, under our continuing services contracts with them, that we would be able to build it. The limit on the continuing services contracts, however, is $4 million. So if the construction cost goes over $4 million, we have to put it back out onto the street as a standalone project, and that's what we're in the process of doing. So part of what we're asking for feedback from you folks is where we go with that final design and how we approach it from the standpoint of how this building looks. Because realistically, we started off with some preliminary renderings from Folly Bryant that were a single-story building that spread along the entire stretch, and realistically, it ended up looking like a strip mall. And from a standpoint of being a statement building, we didn't think that that was the right approach. So we ended up with a two-story structure, is what you see here, as both of these renderings demonstrate. The other is trying to fit all of this onto the existing site and making it work for pull-through for the vehicles coming into the apparat, coming into and out of the apparatus bay. So there's some site conditions that limited how we laid everything out, and so that's kind of where we've come to at this point.
And then, of course, I'm sorry, I was.
Go ahead.
And of course, the hybrid option sounds like where we're heading, and we're going to have to trust Chief and his staff to, you know, tell us what they need in terms of, you know, difference, hiking it up a little bit from economy and having something nice.
But I will say that regardless of how the building looks, the interior footprint and the layout and the components of the building that are included are pretty much identical to what's being included, what was included in Fire Station 3, as far as all of those clean rooms and all of that.
And the training facility.
All right, I had Councilwoman Kramer and then Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you. Honestly, I would say I don't really care what it looks like outside. I think it's inside that matters, because we're asking our firefighting professionals to live in this location basically every third day. this location basically every third day, twenty-four hours a day. It's not only you live there, but it's also their office. Um, I didn't know that it was more the economy model out at Station Three. That's when we toured it. It's a very nice facility. Um, but I think, you know, if I'm flying somewhere, I'd rather sit in economy plus, an economy. And, um, I just, I personally think, I agree with Councilwoman Barnaby, um, all the safety features inside that we saw out at Station Three, uh, a full-service generator for twenty-four seven operations with, I'm assuming then, diesel on-site. Um, but yeah, make it as nice as you can inside for the staff, please.
Councilwoman Moore and then.
Um, just a couple of questions. So the two options seem to have a tower. So we are definitely considering having that training element as part of the design.
That would say requirement, yes.
Well, to be clear, the, the tower that's there is not a training tower. It, it is, it is, is a, so again, part, part of what we were trying to develop was, is, uh, a building that becomes a brand, if you will, for how things look. You know, we've got multiple buildings being considered to be built by the city. And we're trying to figure out what, how we want to make them look. We don't want them all to look the same, but we want to have some sort of common element associated with them. And given that this is going to be essentially the entry point into the city, we wanted to include some elements that would make a statement. Um, so that's what that is. That's basically a tower that includes the stairwell to get up to the second floor.
Um, I agree. Um, this area of the city, I think it will be important to the surrounding area that the building has some external, um, elements that are a little bit more than the standard economy. Um, so I care about the exterior because this is just a few blocks away from where I live. Um, that said though, can we go back to costs a little bit? So, if, I heard you right, if the, if Fire Station Three would roughly almost double in price today, so we're talking about that actual square footage number doubling in price, or were there the other elements that you pointed out that were not part of the vertical cost per square footage? How do we get to the part where we really do have an understanding of what we're spending, given, if you go back to that slide that talks about costs, that last piece of it are all many unknowns that make it difficult for me to assess how much I can spend per square feet?
To answer your question, to get an all-in number, you know, I think there were some design development plans that were produced. And we can and have worked on putting a number to that. I don't know if it's something that we wanna share first. It's something that I would, you know, ask Mr. Perry and anybody else that we can, you know, give you all that information. They can share it to you as initial schematic cost estimate. Um, but again, the numbers that you see here are today's dollar numbers. And then again, if you want a good idea where you go from that number, you're looking at roughly about thirty percent over that number as an all-in construction cost. And if you would, on the do, does not include, you'll kind of see where I put a range. For instance, the site work costs are typically eight to ten percent of the overall total cost. Below the line are typically about ten to fifteen percent of the total costs. And the soft costs will range in there. So you could almost add thirty percent onto those numbers as an all-in, uh, project cost.
And then just a follow-up for Mr. McClellan. How will this process work? Will we be, and maybe, or maybe it's a Mr. Perry question. Are we bidding it out? Are we, what are, how are we getting to the next step where we begin to negotiate the below-the-line costs with a specific contractor?
The, what we are doing is, we are in the process, we have it finalized, um, to put the final design for the, for the fire station, to basically pick up the design from where it is right now and say, we wanna create construction documents. Uh, so that is going on the street. That will be of qualifications-based selection. At the, closely behind that, we'll be putting on the street the standalone construction manager at risk project for us to select contractor to oversee the construction. Um, and that will also be a qualifications-based selection process. Both of those selections would ultimately be reviewed by committee, and the committee's recommendation would come back before council for council to approve both contracts.
If I could just address that to make it real clear, what Mr. McClellan just said, since, since the project cost is estimated to be over four million dollars, the CNNA requires that we do a competitive, um, selection, both for the architectural piece, um, which we've used Folly for thus far, um, to get us to this point, but continuing on to do construction drawings and complete the architecture, the construction drawings, the engineering, and a whole host of other duties. Then basically, once we get those construction drawings and we, we're, we don't have to have them fully done, but we put it on the street for a construction manager at risk. Remember, the construction manager is managing the problem for us at risk, giving us a price. And so that's the way basically it would come back in, all subject to council approval. So, we're gonna be requesting authorization to both, um, authorize the, the construction manager at risk, as well as the architecture and engineering. Once the, uh, the construction manager's done, we'll have a price of, of what it will cost. And, and it'll contain a, a, a MAC, a maximum allowable construction. I think one of the interesting things about, well, not interesting, but when you look at the cost between the economy and the standard, and you compare that this is forty percent larger than the last project we did, it, uh, the cost has gone up considerably and the like. If we built fourteen thousand square feet, basically, at that adjusted cost rate of four-point-two to four-point-three million, it's ten thousand square feet divided by four-point-three million, which comes out to, uh, four-hundred-and-thirty dollars a square foot. I mean, that's how much it would really cost to build, by extension, Station Three in today's dollars at ten thousand square feet. But this is fourteen thousand. So if you take fourteen thousand square feet and you multiply times four, uh, four-hundred-and-thirty dollars a square foot, and that's just the first cost, that comes out to about five, uh, I think it's about five-point-nine. I'm sorry?
It's eight-point-four.
I, I, I'm sorry. Let, let me do some math here.
I was doing it six-hundred a square foot.
Yeah, yeah.
Councilwoman Coker has some comments.
Okay. But, but, but you can look at it that way. At the end of the day, I, I think what we're gonna try to do is get a recommendation from council. And the recommendation, because the recommendation has to go back to the architects to say, this is generally what we're talking for, for, for cost. And that's the type of facility we'll design to put out in the street for bid, basically. And that, that's what we're looking for here. And, and, and when you look at it, you know, you can be, we, we know, we know forty, uh, four-hundred-and-thirty dollars a square foot is, is really what it would cost for base economy today, if you compare what we had at Station Three being economy plus generally, because the estimate was three-fifty to four-hundred in the proposals. If you wanted something that looks nice, that meets all the boxes, that has some of the, the amenities that are required, you might wanna look at the lower end of the standard and say, how much does it cost to build fourteen thousand square feet at five-hundred-and-fifty or five-hundred-and-thirty or five, you know, that type of thing? That gives you a little bit of a margin.
Councilwoman Coker?
Yeah, um, a couple of things. First off, how much had we budgeted for this?
I believe it's been four million dollars thus far appropriated.
Okay, so that's what, okay.
And I'd also point out on that fact that some of the funding sources may be subject to additional support from the state. We may.
Or federal.
Or, or potentially federal, absolutely.
Okay. And then, um, I, I agree with Councilwoman Moore. I do think that we have to make the exterior look good. I mean, it's, it's on our, our main gateway into the city. And, I mean, you don't want people just putting ugly buildings up and, you know, I wouldn't want private citizens to, and I don't want us to either. But I do agree with, um, I definitely think safety is premier as far as, um, the backup, uh, stuff. I would defer to the chief about, do we need a commercial kitchen? I know, I don't, I've not experienced what goes on during the hurricane and what y'all do, but I know food came in from outside. So do we really need a commercial kitchen? I think, uh, some of the frustration with Station Three was waiting for tiles from Italy and things like that. So I, I don't know. Maybe there could be some value engineering done to, um, you know, do we need a theater? Is, is a training room with a nice TV good enough? I, those are the things.
That's with the, um, I, I just talked to Jim about the difference with this process versus the hard bid at Station Three, is that, you know, we have that flexibility, uh, to work with, uh, the contractor. And we're gonna say, hey, we, we don't really wanna focus on this area so much and have all these high-end things. We'd rather put a nice kitchen hood in and, and have a little bit better kitchen, you know? So, a lot of these things that y'all are addressing is, it, um, we, we'll have that flexibility with this process that we didn't have at Station Three.
Thank you. Mr. Perry, so we can wrap this up.
Yes.
Suggestions that, that you have right now to move forward?
Sure. I, I think, from what I've heard, and, and there's a couple of different variants on it, but i- if the low end of the standard is what we're looking for, then I think we take five-hundred-and-fifty a square foot, we multiply it times, times fourteen thousand, and we come up with seven-point-seven million. And so, what I think the motion would be, that we would be seeking ultimately, is authorizing Public Works to direct our architects and engineers to look at a cost, uh, of approximately five-hundred-and-fifty dollars per square foot for fourteen thousand square feet. That should give them enough specificity to start seeing, uh, uh, what they can design and hone down the cost a little bit. And as Chief talked about, maybe we can do a little bit less, hopefully. Uh, construction materials are starting to stabilize a little bit. I'll, I'll let these guys talk to that, um, and the like. And so, um, I, I think that's a good direction. It, it, it's on the high end, there's no doubt. But that's where we're at. And I think if you, we, uh, if we talk to Brett, you know, some of the other comparable stations that are being built around here, they're, they're a little bit more expensive than they are now, um, than they are, than they were yesterday. And when I say yesterday, a couple of years back, and, and they might get more expensive going forward. So, I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, I also think it's important, though, as we're going through this process, that we are looking, can we get it down to twelve-eight? You know, is there a way to maybe, you know, still have the same building and process? I don't know. I'm not saying that, that, but if there's ways to do some things that might not affect the quality of workmanship, I mean, of, of operations, and, you know, so, and if we can get it down to five-hundred, you know, there's just with, that, that is what the process is now. And it would be the, you know, because again, it's, it's.
One of the examples we were hoping to, you know, and, and sites to visit was, um, one of our local departments, Parish. And talking with that fire chief, even with his process, and they came in it with a training towers around, I don't know, it had a high-dollar amount, but they were able to come in way under, um, and, and save about a million dollars, I think, with their, um, process to make things more economical, if you will. And, um, so there are ways to trim, trim down what we need and stick only to what we need. So, I think we can do that working, uh, through this process, and we shouldn't have a problem.
Right. Well, and I think one of the things that's important, too, is, is to make sure that that station, um, I don't know if anybody else has been through Station Two now, but, you know, if you've been through it now, you see what they're living in. Very interesting where you gotta walk through to get to, to what and how and all that. But, um, it's important to make sure that we are set up for the future because that is a little bit more of a distance sometimes. And, and we will be able to grow if we have to a little bit there.
Yes, sir.
Is important, so.
I just, I, yeah.
Uh, Ms. Coker?
Yeah, and this might be more for the architect. Um, I, I think that, um, sometimes you can value engineer it so that, you know, maybe if ceiling heights are two inches shorter, you have less use of materials, less waste. So I don't know if that's part of your process, but I'd kind of like to see that done in, in terms of when you're designing it, thinking of what the materials are. And sometimes it's not less square footage, it's how you use it.
I just wanna clarify the numbers. If we're just saying five-hundred square feet for the fourteen thousand, but adding the suggested thirty percent estimate brings us not to seven, but to like one, nine-point-one. So, when we're trying to give them direction as far as square footage, I just wanna be mindful of adding that extra layer of cost so we really know what we're committing to.
We're looking at construction cost right now because that's really what we're focused on with the, uh, cost estimates with, with the architects. We'll have to put all those other soft costs into it, there's no doubt. But hopefully, we can do some value engineering that was pointed out. And, and I think that the city had pretty good luck with the, the garage, from what I understand, doing that. Um, and it's a really nice project that they built. And they didn't get the elaborate extravagant, um, Gucci model, but they got a really nice product.
So we're looking for a motion to?
Yeah, I'd, I'd request a motion to authorize Public Works to direct the architects to target approximately five-hundred-and-fifty dollars as a, a, per square foot, uh, maximum for fourteen thousand square feet of construction.
And that's, this is not approving it, this is.
No, it, it all has to come back to council, absolutely. It, it's just that they have to have a place to start. And, yeah.
So specifically, we are authorizing Public Works to work with the architect to come up with initial renderings for a project that would cost five-hundred square feet per square foot?
Five-hundred-and-fifty dollars per square foot, right. And it's not renderings. It, it, it is architectural work to include all the way up through construction drawings because we need some level of construction drawings to be able to put it out in the street other than a rendering, a picture.
And this would be a balance between functionality and aesthetics, right?
Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am.
That's, that's a good point. Yep. And we would value engineer. Yep.
And also, I mean, he was specific that that price per square foot did not include quite a bit. So what are we looking at a total?
Yeah.
What's the total project, then?
Well, we'd have to figure that out, and that's what would come back to you.
At five-fifty per square foot at fourteen thousand square feet, times, but with, but adding thirty percent of that cost is a little over ten million.
If necessary.
If, if necessary.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I feel like that's a lot of money.
Five million dollars is a lot of money. Million dollars is a lot of money.
Just wanna make sure we know what we're talking about.
Well, we have some kind of idea how, how much the feds would kick in.
It, it, that's really hard. We're working on that right now. Yeah, for sure. And, and obviously, that would play into it as well.
But again, this is gonna, this is just the first initial bite at the apple. It'll come back and we say no, if something's wrong, or if it comes back. And ultimately, they're, you know, I think they hear what we're saying is, we need to get it, if we can get it at four-fifty, we're gonna. This is just the maximum at this moment. But to bring it back and then, you know, because, again, we didn't, we haven't been the controller of the supply chain and where we are right now, but we know we need a fire station.
And, and the other option is, you can say two-hundred dollars a square feet and see what they come up with. I mean.
I think they hear us, though. If we can get it at four-fifty.
Well, and remember the flexibility of this process versus what we did at Three, which was hard bid. So to change those tiles, it ended up costing us the cost of the tile and an additional cost almost.
That's a good point.
You know, and fees. I mean, we had zero wiggle room at all. So the process was less than desirable at a hard bid. You know, so that's typically in this kind of process, you go a little bit high and then you whittle it down. And that's kind of what I've learned from other, other chiefs.
And we're gonna be watching.
If I could speak to one point that Chief brings up a very good point. Um, and I, the original way that you guys were doing your procurement was through hard bid. And the design is already a hundred percent done. And there's not a lot of room for changing it at that time. They go out, and then you have general contractors that will compete, and the lowest qualified bid will be awarded the job. What you're doing here is more the construction manager at risk route. And typically, what happens is we get on board early in the design phase. We get on board when the design's, we'll call it conceptual, at thirty percent, if you will. And we can do an early cost estimate and identify that we're over program budget. And then we can immediately start to look at how we can rein that in early in the design process before it's at a hundred percent. So typically, you will do three cost estimates, conceptual, a design development, we'll just call it fifty percent. And then we do one at a hundred percent. And at a hundred percent, we are now aiming to get right within our program budget. All the while, being able to provide you all value engineering alternatives that will help save costs while still providing, you know, the same level of quality. So the, the method and the route that you all are going right now does have a lot more flexibility. Just kind of wanted to, um, you know, explain that a little bit more to Chief's point.
Right.
But flexibility as in just in the designing, eventually, the project will be hard bid?
Flexibility in the.
Pre-construction.
In the pre-construction, being able to help the design come within the budget versus producing something, and then we're over budget, then trying to get it back within budget. That becomes not as cost-effective.
Mr. McClellan?
Um, but also to your question about it being hard bid, no, it would not be hard bid. The idea again is that we would put the construction manager at risk for the construction of the final station on the street for qualifications-based selections. We'd have a review committee. We would select the most qualified. We'd have a review committee, we would select the most qualified construction manager at risk to provide the services. They would then be brought back before council to be selected, a contract negotiated with them, with contract approval by council, and then that construction manager at risk would work hand in hand with the final design architect firm to do that value engineering, to keep that, that, uh, square foot cost, if you will, in mind as where they want to go to, and how, how to rest, rein things in as necessary to do that, all as the design is being finalized, rather than a final design is prepared, put on the street and advertised for hard bid. That's what we did with Station Three, um, and we got a station out of it, but we had a lot of headaches along the way, as it relates to the contractor involved and, and making changes on, on the fly, so, um, just to be clear, it is not going to be a, a hard bid, it is going to be a construction manager at risk selected based upon their qualifications, a contract negotiated with them, brought back before council for approval, and then work with the design team to develop and refine the design before it's finalized.
So, does that mean that we are limited in who will actually do the construction at this point?
No, we'll pick 'em.
You, you, the council will pick them.
But of the, the six.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
So-
Stop me if I'm commingling.
Again, the, the item that's on the agenda later for selection of consult, construction managers at risk is for, on, basically on-call services for construction management services for projects up to four million dollars. If the cost of the project is over four million dollars, we can't use those contractors in that list, we have to put it on the street as a standalone project to be selected based upon qualifications at that point.
So you get to pick it.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're clear on-
You are, you are not-
What level of work we're authorizing and at what price.
At, at this point, all you're, based upon what Mr. Perry has asked for, is to, is basically giving us that, that target, if you will. So when we're putting together the packages and making the selections of the final design team and the final construction manager at risk, that's gonna be the focal point, to say, this is our target, we're trying to, we have a site, we have a, a generalized layout, but we're trying to get to this total cost based upon square footages and everything else included, that's all we're doing. So you're not gonna be, we're not gonna come back to you and say, you have to use this contractor.
Okay.
We're gonna come back to you and say, we recommend, based upon qualifications, that we hire this construction manager at risk, and then it will be invoked for council approval.
Tell, tell her a little bit about how the construction manager at risk actually hires contractors and subs, that might help a little bit.
Um, I'd, I'd let you talk to that one.
Again, that was one point I did want to bring up. This project is still competitively bid, please understand that. It's not competitively bid at the general contractor level, it's competitively bid now at the subcontractor level. So whoever you all decide to hire as your construction manager at risk will go out to the market, meaning go to our subcontractors, and we will require a minimum of three bids for each discipline. Sometimes we'll get five or six bids, we then qualify those bids. So on a fire station of this nature, you'll probably get in the ballpark of a hundred to a hundred and fifty subcontractors bidding for each of the scopes of work. It will be your construction manager's responsibility, then, to scope all of them, to make sure that there's no gaps or overlaps, and then provide you all with that final guaranteed maximum price. But it is still being competitively bid at the subcontractor level.
Okay. I, also to the same, I mean, to the previous point of Jim, or Mr. McCollum's, which was, I also just want to make sure we're not agreeing right now, today, to spend ten million dollars on this.
No, it's, it all comes back, so. All right, so Chair will entertain a motion that Mr. Perry had asked for.
Can you repeat it?
Chair will entertain a motion.
I would request that, uh, that council authorize public works to direct, um, to direct the architect to target fourteen thousand square feet of building at an approximate cost of five hundred and fifty dollars per square feet.
Mr. Mayor?
We had a motion by Mr. Kramer, is there a second?
I was going to, I'll second it, but I'll ask for a friendly, friendly amendment, that it be no more than five hundred and fifty dollars per square foot, is my friendly amendment.
I agree with that amendment.
Okay.
Seconded by Mrs. Barnaby. All right, any further discussion by council? This time, we'll take a motion, starting, uh, take a, a vote, starting in Ward Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Carrie's five to zero, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, appreciate it. All right, moving on, we'll go to citizen comment. Um, at this time, the council will accept citizen comments on any non-agenda items, and, uh, we, we just want to remind everybody, but you will have your three minutes to talk. When you come up, you'll state your name and address for the record. Once you've talked, um, then we'll have all of the comments, and then after all of the comments are done, then the council will make comments, or will direct you to get with staff on some other items, or to talk about it. This is a business meeting, if there's any disruption from the audience, or clapping or that, we don't, don't, um, allow that at this time, we will ask you to leave, or we will have you escorted out. So this is a business meeting, and at this time, we will get, um, Rodney Jones, please come forward, please state your name and address for the record.
A point of clarity, I thought presentations were ten minutes long, and that one was extremely long, also you didn't-
Please state your name and address for the record.
No, I got a question about clarity, Mr. Brown.
Please state your name and address for the record, so when your three minutes-
All right, two thirteen sixteenth- I'll, I'll play the game, it's, it's no worries for me. Two thirteen sixteenth Avenue, um, I filed a complaint with the Human Resource Department and the firm of Bray Robinson, who you sent me to, um, concerning Mr. Perry's slanderous and vicious attack on me, that he can't support by one bit of evidence, can't produce one document. I appreciate what you're saying, Ms. Moore, about record retention and how important that is to produce the documents, if you're gonna make claims, they can. And I've been asking for four years, ma'am, I'm gonna talk to you, 'cause you're new and you're not, I hope you're not a part of this process. I've been coming down here for four years, I've done everything Mr. Brown has asked me to do. I bought witnesses, I bought a federal investigator, I bought friends from the community, people that have filed other complaints, the Bradenton Police Department has not done those complaints. Mr. Perry, in an effort to discredit me, he goes on this visceral, visceral slanderous, uh, tirade in the middle of the meeting, and he can't support that by one document, one bit of documentation, one witness, no nothing. Now, I produced all my documents, I've had them down here, I bought witnesses, and we've got Josh Kramer sitting right here.
Who am I?
He is the sen-, where is he?
Right here.
I'm blind, I'm sorry.
Right here.
Yeah, Josh?
Right here.
Yeah, right here, excuse me. We've had Mr. Ruttercell sit up here the whole time, he's an attorney, I don't know who's doing the risk management function for the city, but it, something's wrong here. You know, how does this happen, when we get somebody, and no offense to the fire folks, I love y'all, and the police department, too, I love y'all, appreciate your work, all the good ones, we appreciate you. Now we've learned that we've got an exodus of police officers being terminated. We understand that, we understand that Ben Piper's in some real heat, if he's not already gone, we learned that from inside, there's a couple other police officers, we understand that are on administrative leave. Uh, so when is the community, when are the people that pay you, you work for us, when are we gonna get some information? What, Jean Brown, you can't produce, I've been coming down here for four years, and you can't produce one meeting that you've had with me, even though I've requested it for four years, for four years. My employer from Telus, we have a representative in, from Telus, they've actually sent somebody down here to be in the audience, and Telus has come back and said in the meeting, you slandered my name. My employer, the, the person that built Bradenton Village, she's white, I guess you figured she wasn't gonna say anything, she said you just slandered my name. So what is this? This is like, it's, it's embarrassing, we just went through this process that should've been had, had in a workshop, Bill Sanders back there says, hey, can we have public comment on this? You guys just smoothed that right over and kept right on going. That's not the way it's done, you know why, Jean, you worked for me, whether I'm black, blue, purple, plaid, sun, you worked for me. So you made it real personal to me and my family, what you've done, and Jean, I'm gonna destroy you. I'm gonna destroy you right in front of these people, and it won't be physical, we're spiritual people. You can't produce one piece of documentation, and Josh can't either, to support my claims.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Dr. Catherine Harrison?
Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. Good morning, I'm Dr. Catherine Harrison, five oh eight First Avenue East, I brought my circus with me this morning.
That's fine.
Um, I've noticed that you're dealing with some very weighty financial numbers, and there's lots of dialogue between, uh, defining all of these terms, are we spending ten million dollars now, are we authorizing this? Why doesn't a city of this size and of these assets have a comptroller? Why don't you have someone to help provide an extra layer of protection for yourself and understanding for these financial terms, as well as another set of checks and balances? Other municipalities smaller than Bradenton have a comptroller, locally have a comptroller. It's an asset that you're not taking advantage of, so I just, I wondered why that was not the case. Why is there not a comptroller for the city of Bradenton?
You have, you're, in your three minutes, we don't respond at, at the end of the-
That is, that's it, I just want to know why, why we're not, more why we're not doing that, why we're not, we're wanting to play with the big boys, but we're not wanting to act like them.
All right, thank you.
Have a good morning.
Jennifer Wayman? Please state your name and address for the record.
Jennifer Wayman, Precinct one one seven. Um, I'd like to make a comment on the, um, parade, the pride parade, which I don't have a problem with. I do have a problem with a drag show going on at that, I do not think that's age appropriate. I think, um, that's going a bit too far. Uh, when I was growing up, you had to, uh, be at least twenty-one to get to see those sort of things. I don't want to see the city of Bradenton getting involved in drag shows. And I'd like to know who approves that? Is that you guys that approve that? Because I'd like to know for reelection, I'd like to let everyone know who's approving drag shows. That's my three minutes, so do you, is that you, guys?
We, at the end of the, all the citizen comments, there will be comments from the council.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, Bill Sanders, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Before you start my three minutes, are you gonna allow public comment on agenda items? There was no cards in the back, and then you just had a presentation, you wouldn't allow public comment for a pretty major dollar amount. Are you gonna allow that? Because I would like to speak to some of those issues.
Your time has started, but you do have, we don't have any, uh, public hearings today.
So you can only have public comment on public hearings?
Now, now's the time for your comments, sir.
Okay. I took ten seconds of my time to ask what I thought was appropriate for the public to be able to comment. I have, this has been going on for years, and previous, uh, controversy with, um, council members, and that's, uh, the baseball tickets and the suite of our city that is allegedly controlled by the mayor. And when I was there last March, there was fifty-four people in that, I counted, in that box. And we're not reporting that to the Ethics Commission, and we're supposed to. I spoke to the Ethics Commission, and, uh, Mr. Rittercell, city attorney, on February fourteenth last year, said this, this is thought to all council, that was here at the time. Uh, this is just a reminder, the, um, government officials are required to file a gift disclosure for any gifts received for more than one hundred dollars in value. And, uh, he says to me, yes, Bill, yes, on March ninth, a pair of tickets is most, to most events will trigger a reporting requirement. So, um, these tickets, in my estimation, are worth about two hundred dollars apiece. So, uh, why is it, you know, if you want to have the box, that's fine, the public doesn't get invited to this. This is, uh, used as a political tool to get people on your side. Mayor's office has done this for years, before you, and still continue, and I think the practice is, is bad. You can get up to fifty tickets to hand out to your friends, and then I've been up to talk to people, and they say, well, I love that mayor, why is that? Because he gave me two tickets to the ballpark. Hmm, okay, and I see who's there, i- it's, you know, and that's done in corporate world all the time. We had, uh, box suites at Kansas City Royals, the Kansas City Chiefs, Iowa Cubs, uh, Iowa State University, but that was private business, that came out of our profits, not taxpayers' funds. So I'm saying at least report this, because I'm gonna be talking back to the ethics, and I think these tickets are worth two hundred dollars apiece, and I know each council person gets two, so that should be four hundred dollars per game, times twelve games.
Moving forward, we'll ask for Michelle Martin. Please state your name and address for the record.
Michelle Martin, and for the record, I think it's a violation to ask for my address, although I did just move to Bradenton, that's really not something that everybody needs to know about my address, but I'm at twenty-nine, twenty-two, twenty-ninth Ave. Um, and I think, Josh, you're my ward council, so I'm hopefully, um, set up a meeting to meet with you. So there's a lot going on, as we all know, in the cultural war around, um, drag shows and what's okay for kids, and their, their exposure. So you guys are going to be having to deal with those situations, and so I'm calling on you today to hopefully use your intellect and your critical thinking, rather than being persuaded by what's politically correct. So judging by the age of everybody here, we all understand consequences, and if you ever had any children, you would say, of a twelve-year-old or an eleven-year-old daughter, if there was a nineteen-year-old boy who was talking with her and speaking with her, you'd want to nip that in the bud early and not endorse their relationship over and over until it got to the point where, you know, she was in love and there was a relationship established, because it's just inappropriate, and as adults, you would need to say, mm, you're just not ready for that yet, so I'm gonna put a little barrier there until I think that you're mature enough to handle that. In the same way the state has made that their position in terms of alcohol, in terms of going to strip shows, in terms of other things that are kind of adult themes, because kids don't need to be exposed to those themes that early, even if their parents want them to be exposed to those themes that early. We don't allow parents to give their kids alcohol, we don't allow parents to bring their kids to strip shows, it's just not appropriate, because that's not the kind of adults we want in society, right? So, we have now this opportunity for you guys to make a statement about manatee pride, bringing in a adult male drag queen, calling it family-friendly, so that this male can perform to children. And while this might be a politically sensitive subject, it's really not, it's really not something that ought to be a sensitive subject, it really should be a clear issue. Kids don't belong watching adults gyrate sexually. It's really kind of clear whether they're dressed up like clowns, whether they're wrapped in rainbows, or whether they're, you know, adult women performing as women, it doesn't really matter, adult, children shouldn't be exposed to this, and certainly not endorsed by the city. So just as one little aside, the people who are endorsing this, bringing it to the city, is called also youth, and I just want you to know that they just were removed from the county for a display that honored a man who's a pedophilia, a pedo, pedophile. He would bring kids in and experiment sexually on them as scientific study. Thankfully, the county commissioners removed that, because they knew that that was inappropriate to honor somebody like that, and I'm asking Binghamton, or Binghamton, that's where I'm from, Bradenton, to follow suit and say, that's not gonna happen on city grounds.
Thank you. Deanna Brinkley? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, uh, my name is Deanna Brinkley, and I also, um, ditto everything that Michelle Martin just said. Um, I don't care what people do behind their closed doors, and I don't care what kind of sexual relations people have, as adults- As adults, that is their business. But we're talking about children, young children, and minors, which is 18 years and younger. Yes, to go to a strip club or a sex store, you have to be 21 years or older. So to have this out in the open, in public, I would think is probably illegal. I don't know if you guys, you know, should be crossing that barrier. I do understand that this is the eighth year that they have done this. We all didn't really pay attention to things like this in the past. But now, it's become a, almost a pandemic, that we have to rescue these children from these people who think that this is appropriate. I hope that Manatee County and the city of Bradenton does not become a national story with this, like some of these other counties have. We know that DeSantis is cracking down on drag shows, so you could be the next target. Also, I'm surprised that nobody returns emails. I think that's very unprofessional. When people have a question, I think it should be addressed by the council members on an issue that is very strong to the community. But we need to know where you guys stand on this, just like Jennifer Wayman said. You know, this, this has to do with how you get reelected, and how you operate in your city for the people that live here. So I hope that you guys can understand that this is inappropriate. They can have the parade, I mean, that is fine. But when you cross the line, having, yes, trans and these shows coming into young children is very, very inappropriate. So I hope you guys can do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack May. Good morning. Please state your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Jack May, 8811, 46 Ave West, 34210. I'm the president of a group called Manatee Patriots, formerly known as Tea Party Manatee. Maybe some of y'all are familiar with it. I also represent a contingent of 1,200 voters. A lot of people think we're just a small, little organization that meets every Tuesday night out at Mixon Fruit Farms. I'm sorry, that was a shameful plug. But we are a conservative group, not to be concerned, or not to be can, put with necessarily, I'm called a Republican group a lot, and we're not. What I want to talk about is the Manatee Pride Festival. Understand, this is the eighth outing. And my concern is that things don't get out of hand. We know that in Pinellas County, they have had several years of a similar-type situation. We know last year that, I think, it got out of hand. So I'm concerned about the content. You've got a group called Hovercar. Now their last big gig was Free Abortion On Demand Without Apology Concert in Tampa. So we're seeing that the content is extremely adult. The Britney, Zeff, and crew, her lyrics are extremely adult. Mama Ashley Rose. Now Mama Ashley Rose purports that she is a 501(c)(3) and gives money to charities. The charity that they enjoy the most are a, several LGBT youth camps. So the charity, the money that they're raising is not for the city of Bradenton and any of its activities or helps. It's not for Manatee County. It is concerned with what we call grooming. Now, I apologize that I haven't paid attention to this in the past, but it's become so in-your-face and so, so moving to conservatives in your city that we have great concerns about the, the method and means by which such programs are approved. What, what, have you looked? Do you know? Can anyone tell me the lyrics that Hovercar sings? See, we get, we, we talk about the drag queens, and that's an obvious issue, that, that children who are, who, like I say, whether their parents want them to see adult things or not, there's a lot of adult things that parents expose their children to that are against the law. We have statutes. We have laws. We're a nation of laws, we're a city of laws, we're a county of laws. I understand, though, that oftentimes, it's not so much that we're a nation of laws, but we're a nation of political will. And I hope that you use that political will to do right.
Next would be Catherine, is it Harrison? Hanson? Okay. Thank you. It looks like R-R, not an N, so sorry. Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, Catherine Hanson, 1806 19th Avenue West, Bradenton. I'm here to discuss, and I sent out emails to everybody concerning the Drag Queen Show. I support what's been previously said. But my concerns would be is that this has been billed as a family-friendly event, and that the performers' foundation is the mission to provide a safe and friendly, family-friendly atmosphere for all. So my question for you, and I'll, hopefully we'll hear it after we're all done, is at what point does this cross the line of being family-friendly? I know that individual opinions may vary, and I respect those. I have concerns about the venue. Shows that are not appropriate, are not appropriate for open, taxpayer-funded, public properties that are easily accessible by all ages, including children. Protection of the children is another concern. I know that as a nation, we are facing social and political issues which have, which are controversial with children's programs. And one of those is drag queens. Components of these shows have been associated with sexual grooming and destruction of children's innocence. Children are not props for political or social agendas. Several states, recently, I believe it's been Tennessee, has passed laws, or states like Florida have proposals in the works to address such issues. If the performance is allowed to proceed, will there be sufficient law enforcement, not only for our, for the safety of everybody, but also to monitor for violations of child protective statutes that are already in place? Florida law in pornography and harmful on minors statute is 847.001 and 847.02. And it's a lot of legal stuff, so I really can't interpret it well for you guys. The other thing, too, is, is being that it's been up front in a lot of conservative sites online, and PragerU was one, and I would encourage you for PragerU.com. There are several issues, several broadcasts, I would say, that they address the drag queen shows. One of them was a drag queen show at the LA Zoo. I know we're not California, but it seems like we're getting there. Where it, it shows what I would describe as burlesque-type shows and simulation of burlesque-style stripping. Also, in that video was also kids that were going up with tip money. Yeah. And so, I thank you for your time. Wow, that one, thank you. Thank you.
All right, I have no other cards. Mr. Perry, I'd like to, you were out of the room, but we had a lady come up, Dr. Catherine Harrison, ask about comptroller and some things, why we don't have a comptroller and what we're doing. And I'd like you to address that, that issue of a comptroller in the city of Bradenton, and what we do have, and some things we're looking forward to, also working forward on. Because we do have people overseeing our books and things.
Oh, of course, of course. Well, of course, you know, most of the finance and accounting is done through the Finance Accounting Department. And we have CPAs and also degreed accountants that handle the finances for the city. And they're done in very strict accordance with state laws, GAAP principles, GASB, Government Accounting Principles, and the like. And they're all subject to an external audit, to make sure that the accounting is done correctly at the end of the year. I'm happy to report that the last, from what I know, about 10 years or so, there's not been an audit that had qualified conditions, material deficiencies, reportable incidents, or the like. And we have unqualified opinions that the books are done in accordance with the law and GASB, General Government Accounting Principles. That's done by CPAs who specialize in that kind of work.
Right, and also when you-
Comptroller's a title. I mean, quite honestly, the whole concept of comptroller isn't even, you know, it was kind of like, for a while, the title of the, of the 90s and the early 2000s. And it's, it's a title for somebody, basically, that has a responsibility for the general treasury and accounting of a corporation, or a municipal corporation, as in our case.
And when you came in, when you first started, what, what did we do right away?
Well, the first, one of the first things we did was enlist the help of an internal audit function, basically, that has looked at various functions, along with our external auditors. And that is submitted for approval to the state. The state looks over that and, and certifies the adherence to accounting principles and GAAP procedures and the like.
And is there at times that we can do some things better?
There always is. I mean, we're government accounting for probably 30-plus years. And it's always ever-changing as well. GASB itself, the government accounting standards. There's whole hosts, like this year, we have to change what are called capitalized long-term leases. And before, you didn't have to do that. So you have to do the fund accounting a little bit differently. But we keep up to date with that pretty, pretty well.
Right, and I think that's, it was a great question. You know, I appreciate it, the question, because sometimes, you know, things just need to be, you know, we hear it.
Sure.
But we want everybody else to hear it as we, as we go forward, so. Thank you on that. So I'm going to open up the council comments, or anything.
Well, I, I guess I'd like to kind of address a lot of the discussion.
Would you like me to address maybe first the process that we go through?
Please.
So, so obviously, great questions today, and then some of the things we do. We have an events committee that is of city staff that goes through. So any event that comes to the city goes through that process. And once they meet all the regulations of that process, then it does come forward to the council to vote on, to approve. So everything does go through an events process. When they meet the regulations and requirements, it comes forward and is either approved or disapproved. One of the things with, you know, the way we do things, obviously, and a lot of you folks out there today mentioned about laws, rules, regulations. There's some laws, rules, and regulations that, that we don't control a lot, you know, from the standpoint of you meet the requirements. But one of the things we do make sure at all our events that we have, that police are present. And if any laws or rules or regulations are, I guess, violated, then it's shut down right away. So, you know, we are a state of, obviously, First Amendment rights plus rules and regulations. So we do have those in place, that if there is something illegally being done at any of our events, the police there will shut it down right away. So you can be assured of that. Going forward, other than that, the council would have to make some other decisions or comments on where we go from here. So, Ms. Coker?
No, I, I mean, that was pretty much going to be my point. I mean, I agree with, pretty much, I think we all agree with, we don't want to see children put into inappropriate situation. And, but we do have rules. I think there is a lot in the media right now. And a lot of those are in communities that are a lot different, more woke, for lack of a better word, communities. And that, that's not Bradenton. And so I don't want to see that in Bradenton. My, my, I was not at last year's or any of the previous years, but spoke to someone that was there, and it was basically someone getting up, singing Barbra Streisand songs in a dress. I mean, I don't have a problem with that. If it goes beyond that, then yes, I hope BPD would, would shut it down. I don't, I don't think we need to become, you know, like that. But I'm not, this is a tough situation, but I, I do think we put the safety and welfare of our children at priority. And, but then we also want to maintain the right to have a nice event for the families. So that's all I'm going to say.
Any other comments?
I'll just, I'll just mention two things about the comments. I agree with both of you, and to the point about process, to the extent that, I just had the pleasure, that was actually what I was going to open with. I just had the pleasure of popping into one of those event committee meetings. And it's a large group, and they take very seriously the review of the materials. So I echo Councilwoman Coker's sentiments that we all care about the safety of the children. And I'll just also note that if we deviate from the process and what's permitted, that also exposes the city to potential liability. So there's also that consideration as well. And then to speak to the comptroller issue, I, I just wanted to follow up to make sure that it was clear that, what I believe Dr. Harrison's concerns were, accountability internally. And so to the extent that we have some kind of finance department flowchart that could clarify for people that we do internal audits, and that we have this external audit, and maybe how the budget process that we're about to embark on in a couple of months relates to that kind of accountability.
Yeah, accountability is called Florida state law that requires all municipal corporations to file what was formerly referred to as a consolidated annual financial report. I would imagine that anybody that runs for office or is intricately interested in government financing would review that report and look at the standards of what have to be adhered to and met. We have done that, 10 years. First thing most people that would explore, whether government's in good financial shape, whether it handles its accounting procedures and processes correctly, is that AFRA, now, the Annual Financial Report. So I would hope and invite anybody on council or in the audience to review that report. And if they see any irregularities, we'd like to know about them. If they'd like to challenge the external auditors that have reviewed that report, who have a duty to try to report any deficiencies, material breaches, or non-adherences to government accounting standards, I'd love to hear about it. And the term comptroller, again, is probably a term of art. We call it the accounting manager. It's someone that has actually gone to school, qualified for sit, for the Public Accountant's Examination, SAP for the Examination, passed the Examination, has to be continually educated on the standards, and thereafter is at jeopardy if there's any breach of following accounting rules. That's accountability.
Ms. Coachman?
Thank you. On that note, I, I'm, I'm really glad that we're having this discussion, because it is very important for our citizens, our taxpayers, to know how we're doing with the money. That's extremely important. Second thing I want to comment on is I agree with many of the comments about concern for our children and what they see and what they shouldn't see. In a public venue, it's extremely important that we maintain decency. So I have been assured that our police department will do as they always do, and that is enforce the law. If anything looks risque, inappropriate, I have been, I, I'm convinced that it will be stopped immediately.
Thank you. Anything else, Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask Ms. Byerline to come up, if she could, please, as the coordinator of the event committee.
I am Kelly Byerline Thomas.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just so you know. I am the coordinator for the event review committee. We do take it very seriously when we vet these events. The events come in with an application process. What, we sit down, and I have, on my committee, we have fire, we have police, we have public works, we have everybody that's in the game. So everybody, you have a lot of eyes on this. And so we're looking, what are they doing? How are they doing it? What's the safety? What's the risks? And then we make a recommendation at that point to you, whether we think the event needs to be approved. We can add stipulations. We have standards that are set in our event guide that has already been pre-approved. We work off of that. But we also can add stipulations. For this particular event, we made it mandatory that they had a minimum of four BPD officers on site. They have contracted eight. That was voluntary by the organization, so they went above and beyond to make sure that everyone there is going to be safe and- So they went above and beyond to make sure that everyone there is going to be safe and have a nice time. So they've met all of our criteria. They did, they have been approved. And again, I have spoken to the event sponsor. Her name is Mary Tavrazini, if I say that correctly. She assures me that she has contacted all of her entertainment and have explained that this is a family-friendly event. It is, all the proceeds don't come back to us. It goes to their programs. And some of those programs are educational, counseling camps. There was a couple of mentions of a parade. There is no parade involved with this event. It's a standalone event at the pavilion. So, do you have any other questions?
I just, one of the things that, having done events here personally, family-friendly events, it is important that safety is taken into consideration. I think after each event, that you all sit down and kind of go through and make sure that things were followed, that, again, they're required to have insurance, they're required to have police under certain situations. In the past, I have never been to this event. In the past, have we had any kind of inappropriate or a situation where our officers had to become involved? Are you aware of anything like that?
They've had the event for seven. This is number eight. I have not, in the records, I have nothing, you know. And I asked the committee and they did not, they were not aware of any problems. They always have BPD on site, so, and nothing was filtered back to me. So it's, you know, they've done this event for many years, and we have not had issues with it.
Well, again, having, being a mom, as all of the ladies are up here.
What about us dads?
Well, I'm not a dad. I'm not, I don't self-identify as a dad, so. Okay? I'm saying, as a mom, you know, I raised two sons and then also raised my niece. Anytime there was a program that I took my children to, I was with my children. I did not allow my children to run around unsupervised at all. Matter of fact, you know, I, my children thought I was probably too protective of them. But if you're, if you grow up in a family that loses a child, you never want to have that happen. So yes, I was extremely protective of my children. I did not allow them to go and interact with something that I didn't feel was appropriate. I would recommend to all parents that they are the ultimate authority on what their children can do. And that I would recommend that if they feel that it's not appropriate for their children, they don't come to this event. I didn't take my children in places that I did not feel was appropriate.
Well, like I said, when we're looking, whether it's this event or it's, it could DeSoto cornhole, it could be anything. I mean, we're looking at them uniformly across. I mean, there's, we have standards they have to meet. So it's, you know, this individual, this particular event is no different than any other event. We're going to look at that event and make sure they meet our criteria, make sure that they have, all the safety concerns are addressed, make sure that BPD, we have an officer that's sits on our committee at all times. He determines how many officers. So, you know, it's very, it's completely vetted, you know, as far as any kind of safety concerns go. And like I said, I give them credit that we only required four officers on site, and the event sponsor contracted eight. So they're obviously showing their concern that it's family-friendly as well.
And I think someone-
Hold on one second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't want to, is anybody else, before we move to the, Mr. Kramer?
That's why I always like Councilwoman Barnaby to go last, because she's going to summarize everything we've all said in a very succinct manner. From the police department side, we never had problems. And I think one thing you all look at is maybe when you meet together, because there's new people that come and go on the committee, you look at the last year and sort of refresh everybody. Hey, we did an after-action last year. Here we are, there were no issues. Like Councilwoman Coker said, no issues last year. It looks like it's just about the same program this year. It just seems to be getting a lot of buzz right now, and I don't have any concerns.
We do, we do a post-event review, and we make, and like I said, I will pull last year's file just to refresh when, if it's an ongoing event that comes up again. But we didn't have any red flags on this, so.
I've got Mrs. Coker and then Mrs. Coachman.
Yeah, well, I thought that the mom brought up a very, a very good point, though, about just because a parent wants to take their child into an inappropriate place, that doesn't make it right. I think the real focus needs to be that BPD is making sure that nothing inappropriate is being done up there. I know that puts a lot on BPD to make that decision. I've been to Drag Queen Bingo, and that is not okay. So if that's going on up there, then I would hope it would be stopped. That's not child-friendly. So I'm just, I trust in our law enforcement. I want it to be a happy day, a fun day for everybody. But, you know, we are not, there are, there is a line that you can't cross.
Lieutenant Ram death is over our extra-duty officers, so I'll reach out to him today just to refresh your concerns and to make sure. Happy to do that.
All right, Ms. Coachman?
Yes, there may be some misinformation going on, because I do remember someone coming up and saying that it got out of hand last year. So I don't know exactly what that was. Not heard.
I don't know where that originated from. May have been a citizen comment, I'm not sure.
All right, well, I think- Yes, ma'am.
Just to clarify, this is, again, according to the information that we have received, this is not a full-blown drag show. And it's not Drag Queen Bingo. It's not any of that.
No, she, she is an educator that originates out of Orlando. This is what I found from the event sponsor. And she travels the country and does family-friendly oriented shows. That's, that's the extent of what I know at this point.
Mr. Mayor? I also, I don't know that we, I mean, I understand there's people touting laws and things like that. I don't know that this needs to be Jim Marson, one in the county of Dade, situation where officers are going up and hauling somebody off. That gets us a lot of attention. Officers can document things and report from there, but I don't know that we need to have officers on like a standby to like raid the stage. I don't, that's not what we're there, the officers would be there for. And that's putting them in a very, very difficult situation.
Well, as we know, this is obviously nationwide, a hypersensitive issue, that we have to make sure that, again, if, and it was brought up, it's not about the festival, it's about what we're showing, or what we, and I say "we" as a community, as a council, have to make sure that, you know, nothing illegal is happening. And I think that the message of that is getting across. And then some of the other things is, I mean, we don't want to turn into some of the other cities in our state or country or, and the lady mentioned California and then kind of laughed, that we're not California. And I don't believe that what this council or what I'll be involved in would ever let that happen. Is this an event that's gone on for now seven years without incident? And some things have changed in our country and our state that we need to make sure that we're overseeing. And I can assure you, if any laws that, you know, are broken, the police are there not only to stop people from being unruly at any point, no matter who they are, also if anything's happening with the event. And we haven't seen it yet. I know, you know, and I would hope that even just coming forward like this, you know, helps the organizer understand that, you know, we're not going to just turn a blind eye to it. And that's important. And I appreciate, you know, everyone coming. Some of the emails that, you know, I'm going to say, just from my standpoint, normally, my normal response is, you know, thank you for your email, please give me a call at this number or that. I respond back. I did not respond to any of these in the last two days because I knew it was going to come up this morning, and I thought that would be the best way to get the overall facts out. And that's important. So I think, Ms. Barnaby?
I just have one more question. Mr. Rudisil, since we have given permission for this event to occur, and there has not been any incidents in the past occurrence of the events, I'm concerned about if we were just to, say, shut it down, that we were opening the city and the taxpayers up for liability.
Yeah, I mean, I think this goes along with what Councilman Kramer was saying. The police aren't going to make a judgment call as to whether they feel what's happening is appropriate or not. They're there to provide for safety and to see if there are any laws being broken. But in terms of like community standards, I think that's, you know, that's something that would have to be addressed after the fact. And it could, you know, could potentially be considered, you know, in a following year, if there was another event application, if the city felt like there was a community standard that was, that was being violated. And just to be clear, you know, the city can't make content-based distinctions when it's looking at these types of events. So when we talk about community standards and what that event committee is looking at in terms of, you know, what they're allowing these events to do, we're going to apply the same standards, whether it's a pride event or whether it's the DeSoto Parade. So I think that needs to be said and needs to be clear in the record is that, and what I'm hearing up here is, there's not a concern about the nature of this event. It's about, okay, if things go too far in a particular direction, and I assume there would be the same concerns, like I said, whether that was a pride event or any other event that had that type of activity. So, but going back to your original question, yes, I don't think the police are going to make a judgment call as to whether something has crossed the line of a community standard. That's not what they're there to do. But, and I don't know what type of conditions we have on that permit. But I think that would be something that'd be evaluated in the future if something like that were to happen.
And Mr. Mayor, I know that I have spoken to Ms. Thomas, because when I was working on Winter Wonderland, that we may want, as a council, to have a workshop and to look at the application process. And again, as we heard earlier today, how exponentially construction costs have grown, we still are maintaining that people just have a minimum of an insurance policy for these events. And we may want to look at that as well. So I think there's several things with events that we could look at. I think it's something that we might want to do at a workshop.
And yes, that is part of, there's a process we're going through right now with Mrs. Thomas about kind of updating all of that and was going to be brought to the council.
Good. Thank you.
All right, I appreciate everyone's comments, and we'll move on. And Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one more.
Yes, oh, Mr. Kramer, go ahead.
To address Mrs. Martin, are you still here? Are you, you're in Courtyard Square? I do have a meeting with the residents there this Tuesday at 6:30 at, I believe, at your clubhouse. So just wanted you to know.
All right, we can't, we can't, can't have any comments from the audience. Thank you. We're going to move forward. Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk?
The next item on the agenda is-
Please, you're out of order, Mr. Jones. You're out of order, please.
No, no, you're out of order because I asked for help and I'm not getting it.
Where, Mr. Jones, if you'd like to go back, Mr. Jones, if, please, if you'd like to go talk with the chief, she will be willing to talk with you and give you the dates of everything. So, Mrs., Madam Clerk?
The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Staff is requesting approval of items A through F.
Move to approve the consent agenda, items A through F.
I have a motion by Ms. Barnaby. Is there a second?
Second.
I forget procedure on asking to pull anything. Do I do it now or before the motion? Before we vote on it?
We'll amend.
I'll withdraw my motion and let you withdraw, let you ask to have something taken, then I'll put it back on the table. How's that?
Why don't you make the motion to approve with, other than what you want to withdraw?
Oh, I see. Thank you.
So go ahead.
I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of six F.
Six F? Okay. So we have a motion to approve consent agenda, removing F for further discussion.
Second.
Okay, so is any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Approved, five to zero, consent agenda except for item F. Mrs. Moore?
Mr. Rudisil and Mr. McCullen were very gracious in their time in explaining to me how municipalities use this type of contract with vendors for specific services. And I appreciate that. The only thing that I had as a follow-up to this was I didn't see a term. So how long do we have these ongoing contracts? And I raised that late in the game, and I apologize for that, because Councilwoman Coachman and I received an email from a constituent regarding our lack of female or person of color bidders historically in Brantton, and a desire to see us open up a little bit more. And I do hear that sentiment from smaller contractors, that they would like to do more city work. So specifically, just how long do we, do we use these contracts? Because I didn't see a term. And then also, there's blanks in them regarding the employees, certain specified employees, and their, their cost being included in the cost of work, as well as the percentages for the contractor fee. And so how do we address that going forward?
Any of those would be filled in as part of the work assignments that would be issued to any of the firms under the contracts, so that when, when we get to the point of saying we want Firm A to do this service for us, that information would be included.
So then, and then it comes before council? Or do we have an opportunity to say we don't agree with that fee or that fee structure?
Again, most of, any work assignment that would come under any of these contracts would come back for council to approve.
Just to clarify, because I did see that in the cover letter, too, so thank you. Is that any contract, even if it's below the four million statutorys?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so any contract, anytime we're going to use one of these?
Correct.
It comes before council? And then we have a discussion about completing the blanks and how much we want to pay?
Yes.
Okay. And then I interrupted, so the first part of the question was term. When do we put this back out so that other people have the potential to be qualified?
Typically, we would have a-
We're going to have, we're going to take a quick recess. Come back to the meeting. And Mrs. Moore, sorry to interrupt your thoughts, but you're ready to finish up?
I just want to point out for the record, Mayor, then it's 10:25 a.m. and it was an incident of disruption by Mr. Jones, another meeting.
Could you please use your microphone, please?
I'm sorry. It's 10:25 a.m., and we have undergone a disruption of the city council meeting. There was repeated actions, both verbal outbursts as well as physical resistance by Mr. Jones, who was repeatedly requested to please collegially adhere to the council rules and try to proceed through the meeting without disruption. Unfortunately, the police had to become involved and will do what they think they had to do under the laws and the like. But, you know, there was personal epithets and insults, attacks, outbursts, interruptions. And I do not think that that is orderly to the process of a democratic government and what we try to do with the citizens. There's adequate opportunities for opinions, as well as viewpoints and the like, and to continuously disrupt meetings. I do not believe is permissible under our council rules.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Mrs. Moore?
So I think the final question that I had was about term and when we could, when we will revisit the issue of putting out a request for qualifications. And potentially, is this something that would be appropriate for a workshop of sorts to make sure that we? I think it's, I think it's maybe a good time with the growth of the city-
I, I think it's, I think it's maybe a good time with the growth of the city to look at how much we wanna include, you know, other, bring other voices to the table, I guess you could say, in this regard.
And if I can kind of piggyback on to that, um, I, I, the only question I really had was, of the six, we've used them at some point, so we know that they're worthy of being renewed, right, or continued?
No, we have not used all six firms.
No.
What we did do was, this was put out on the street for an RFQ, where ten firms submitted on and provided us their qualifications as it relates to doing construction manager at-risk type projects and services for municipalities. The review committee met and basically chose the top five. And we had scoring that was done for the top five, and in fifth place was a tie. So we ended up taking six for that. And again, there's, there's no contractual obligation on the part of the city to use any of these firms at any point in time. Basically, the way we would be using the contracts is, as a particular project came up, that we were in need of construction manager at-risk services, we would review the qualification packages for the six selected firms and determine which one was the most appropriate, most qualified, and most experienced in that particular area for us to pursue.
And then further as to that, Mayor, Councilor, the city would have to adhere to procurement rules regarding the services that are related there too, as well, and authorizations and thresholds. So if it did exceed certain amounts, it has to, the work has to come back before council, because that question was asked before.
And as, as far as the term on those, that was an oversight on our part. Normally, these types of contracts would have a three-year term and would have two one-year renewal options at the consent of both parties. And Mr. Rudicil suggested that perhaps approval of the contract based upon adding that language would be appropriate.
Okay, so, Mr. Rudicil, should we, the motion would be?
I think the motion would be to approve the contracts with the addition of a, the term language being three years with two options to renew, two one-year options to renew.
So that would be?
Sure.
You wanna make that motion?
I will make that motion.
To approve F?
To approve F with the amendment to include a term of three years with two one-year options to renew.
Okay, is there a second? All right, further discussion?
I will just point out, though, that I don't know the procedure, so please forgive me, counsel, about doing workshops and whatnot. I presume I just talk, discuss it with Mr. Perry and go from there.
We can work it out, yep. So approve. All right, hearing, no further discussion from the council, we'll start the vote in Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
Approved, five to zero. Madam Clerk?
The next item on the agenda is Resolution 23-23, a resolution of the City of Bradenton, Florida, extending a zoning in progress for a period of 180 days related to the following uses under the CINDY's Form-Based Code: sale of second-hand merchandise, pawn shops, drug treatment facilities, drug treatment clinics, homeless service facilities, residential facilities for homeless individuals, internet cafes, and massage parlors. Providing for official notice of this zoning in progress in the intent to retroactively apply regulations adopted hereunder, providing for a temporary administrative hold on the processing of applicants, applications for the uses described herein, and providing for an effective date.
Ms. Singer?
Robin Singer, Planning Community Development Director. We're just extending it for 180 days. After the first reading of the proposed ordinance, we kinda went back to the drawing board, and we're gonna propose changes to other sections of the code, the land use regulations, that previously it was just Form-Based Code. So we are having to take that back to the Planning Commission. We expect to be before them with the revised ordinance in April, and then into City Council in May. In your prior resolution, you would allow for one six-month extension, so we'll be well within that.
And it doesn't have to go the whole 180 days if we figure out?
Correct, correct.
All right. Any questions, or Chair will entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Approve, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion by the council? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Singer. All right, and items eight, I guess that'd be more under the administration?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is a request for emergency authorization, if necessary, to engage environmental. What I'm asking for actually is an environmental, technical, legal compliance firm to assist with compliance with the waterkeeper's consent decree. What the short version is, is that we have limited bandwidth within the Public Works Department, and this particular consent decree has a variety of different requirements that, of submittals and deliverables that have to be provided in a timely manner. And there's usually quite a few that are occurring at the same time, or cross-sectioning, that are due one after the other and the like, and sometimes they repeat themselves and the like. You're talking about standard operating procedures, you're talking about plans, you're talking about projects that are required, the clarifier, for, as an example, one, and reports that are necessary. And in speaking with Mr. McClellan, we thought it was best, as suggested, to outsource this, this compliance effort, to have someone that can coordinate all of these various components of, of compliance with the terms of our consent decree. It will allow our engineers and our environmental scientists and our folks that are working on the consent decree to actually focus on, on the improvements and remediations and the policies themselves, drafting the policies, working with the finances, doing the procurements, and all of those necessary elements. And really centralize someone that can coordinate the timeliness of deliverable materials, as I spoke about, reports, plans, and the like, to the plaintiffs in that case. And I, I think one of the things to be mindful of, if you say, "Well, how's it going so far?" "We're doing pretty well, but the way that the consent decree is drafted is that basically there's a deliverable requirement." And ultimately, what happens is that when the deliverable goes to the plaintiff's attorney, their technical expert evaluates whether it meets best industry practice. And if they disagree after reviewing it for 30, or 45, or 60 days, they, there's a penalty, and the penalty runs from the beginning. So we need to put in place a process. And the process has to include the bandwidth of an individual and, and a program and policies that allow us to try to develop those deliverables, get them to plaintiff's technical experts, get technical expert feedback, and hopefully agreement, or if there's disagreement, try to work out the provisions before the deadline reaches. There's a lot to it. It's administrative function, it's, it's related to the regulatory, the litigation requirements of deliverables related to the decree, but they're really technical requirements. Mr. Rudicil and I spoke last night, and Mr. Rudicil would like to opine on-
Yeah, I was just gonna add, I mean, essentially, staff needs assistance to comply with all the reporting requirements under this consent decree. And that involves engineering expertise on the utility side. And so, just like how you just saw with the process that we went through to get those construction manager agreements under the CCNA, it takes like six months. And so what the administrator is asking for is to be able to declare this an emergency, to get this type of firm on board now, to help the city so that we don't incur these penalties under the consent decree. And so, that, that's essentially the ask. We do have some firms, and I know that Public Works is talking to some of the firms that we do have on continuing contracts, so we may be able to work through it that way. But this is just a, just in case, we'd like to have the authorization to be able to go out and hire an engineer as an emergency purchase if we need that.
And we have to get an engineering firm that has experience with this type of work, and it's a fairly specialized type of work. Stan Tech is one, it's kind of well-known nationally, do a lot of environmental engineering, compliance of regulatory requirements, both in consent decrees and otherwise, EPA actions, DEP actions through the state, things like that. And there's, there's probably about four, four to five firms we're looking at right now. Estimated cost is about probably 100,000 to 200,000, hopefully on the lower end, according to Mr. McClellan's estimates. Now, when you think about that, that's probably the cost of bringing an engineer on board with salary and benefits for a year, one engineer.
Ms. Moore?
Actually, Mr. Rudicil and Mr. Perry, I think, addressed my, my questions, which was, why are we doing it as an emergency? So my understanding is that when we get dinged with the penalties, they're pretty hefty and expensive for the city to bear, so thank you for that. And then the other question was gonna be, how much would you say you're budgeting? And you've answered that one as well, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Coker?
Well, that was, I was curious what the fines were. It's probably more than the cost of the engineer.
It can be. I mean, they're designated fines, and they have a range of matrix of cost, but I mean, it could be way more. Hopefully, it'll, yeah, it isn't going to be.
All right, so the Chair will entertain a motion?
Move to approve the request for emergency authorization, if necessary, to engage an environmental litigation compliance firm to assist with compliance of the consent decree in the waterkeeper's litigation.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion by council? Hearing none, we'll start the vote, Ward three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
And two?
Yes.
Approved, five to zero. Thank you. Mr. Perry?
Moving on to items B and, and the accompanying item C for disposition of the City Hall property. As relates to item B, what I'm requesting here is that we be, we received approval. There, as council may remember, there was three designated sites. There was the Sixth and First site, which is where the police station is tentatively slated to be located. There is the 14th Street site, and ultimately, the possibility of a site on Third Avenue, informally known as the Herald, the Herald Building. And as you may remember, we also engaged H.J. Hyde to do a pre-construction assessment of the condition of that building, both from a, a mechanical and structural and, and otherwise across the board type of, type of assessment, as well as look at the suitability of it and, and the like. We've been over there last week, Mr. McClellan and myself, Mayor joined us, and, and the staff from H.J. Hyde, and they began to conduct those inspections. The general report was that it was in pretty good shape. It's about 36,000 square feet. There's other attributes to the site itself that may make it attractive. I won't get into them right now, other than the basics of green space and the possibility of vertical expansion even further. But 36,000 square feet is pretty, is pretty sizable for us, what we need to relocate the administrative functions, as well as the city council functions. And so it seems to be viable, but ultimately, we have to do a further cost assessment and, and condition assessment. H.J. Hyde's doing that. However, we're at a point right now where we probably need to try to explore what the transaction cost would be for that building as it relates to a sales price, and ultimately, what the terms would be. It would all be subject to, obviously, city council approval, and also be contingent upon the city disposing of City Hall. You wouldn't need that site unless you basically decide that we wanna do something with City Hall. And so, what I'd like to do is be able to go back to the principals through their brokers, and we have, we have an individual that's been assisting us with their broker, and try to see what they would be willing to offer, so that you can, you can tell. Otherwise, what we'll do is get a H.J. Hyde report that tells us all about the building, whether it's suitable, what the condition is, what the estimated cost of repair is, and you'll have no idea of what these, the seller is willing to sell the building for and what terms he would be able to provide. Again, it's all subject to council approval, but you can't, it's difficult to make an assessment of one without the other.
And I think one of the important things as we look, and really what you need to look at, is timing. You know, again, there's so many moving parts. I've heard in the past, well, if you sell a house, well, obviously, if you sell your house, you got one thing to do, then you gotta find someplace to live. And you could rent, you could move in with a family member, you could purchase another house, but you've got options. We've just gotta be able to continue, and, and I was gonna use another analogy, but I think they've been coming off the tracks a little bit too much lately. But we gotta keep this going in a forward motion. And again, nothing done today is approved. It's just given the administration the chance to take the next step, to keep the steps going. So when the final approval comes here, you know, it's where we're at from that. Yes, ma'am?
I appreciate what, you know, keeping that ball rolling. What about the other two sites? I know you and I have talked a little bit about the potential difficulties of the Sixth Street site, but I'd like to, I would like to suggest that we consider doing what we just did and some due diligence on the Herald Building with the Sixth Street site. I don't, I don't feel like that one is dead in the water at this point. I, I think that it still makes sense for a few reasons. And I believe that the considerations that Mr. Perry and I talked about were how you would fit things, for lack of a better word, access and frontage on the roads. But I, short of those conversations, I feel it would be in the most responsible thing to do to actually potentially engage a vendor to do some kind of analysis of what we could actually build on that site and whether it is viable. I don't feel like we have sufficiently done due diligence on the Sixth Street site to rule it out completely.
Okay.
Ms. Coker?
Well, am I remembering correctly, we already have someone looking at it for the police station, correct?
Yes, ACOM. We had a meeting with ACOM, who is the architect and the engineer yesterday. We're having challenges with the police site. I don't think it gets better as you add it to City Hall. I don't know if, if H.J. Hyde is looking at that site or not. They're not, right? As it relates to cost and the like, it, it's a blank slate. There's property there, but there's a lot of challenges with the property and the, the adjacencies of the water tower and the other, the pump house and onsite retention and a host of other things. We could do that, and, and we probably should continue to do it. I think it's an easy one for most people to look at and go, "Probably wouldn't work."
Well, but I think, to Ms. Moore's comments is, you know, let's at least, maybe we can get a schematic of what, if they were gonna put two buildings there, we could at least have them look at it.
Right.
Moving forward. That way, we continue that ball-rolling. I like that better than train driving down the track, you know, but anyway, but.
Yeah.
I think that's an easy thing to, I don't wanna say easy.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's gonna be.
But it, but a process that we can at least get some information on and move forward.
I don't know, if you're in the meeting with me yesterday, I don't know how easy it'd be. I think we should continue to do it, for sure. But, I mean, from what the architects were telling us yesterday regarding those adjacencies that are there currently and the like, there's, and, and what would be masked for the police station as it relates to a footprint? Believe it or not, it doesn't leave a whole lot of territory if you wanna put that police station onto Sixth Street, Minoty Avenue, basically. And then there's other issues about if you put it on to, is it Second? I think it's Second Avenue. But we can, we, we should continue to look at it. It's not off the board. It's just, I think, when it looks like it's schematic, I could show you what I saw yesterday, and I'd say, "Well, where would you put it?" And, and there just isn't a whole lot more left.
All right, well, that's just, we can stay open-minded on it.
Sure, sure, no, absolutely, absolutely.
Ms. Coker?
Uh, okay.
Do you wanna go first?
Uh, I just, I just wanted to say, I don't wanna get too far down the tracks on, on the Braden-Herald site, because, I mean, I'm, I'm struggling with that one. I just don't know that it's, um, I'm just struggling with that one. So I don't wanna get too far out over our skis on that one.
Yeah.
I've been vocal for a while, but 14th Street, to me, is an opportunity. So I, I'm gonna trust you not to get us too far out over our skis.
And that's what, that's why I'm asking for authority. I don't wanna get too far out over my skis, because I do recognize the, the significance and impact of that. But I think it's also important to see what the selling price would be and, and what the terms might be based on, subject to council approval and the condition that the building be sold, so that you get the full picture of what's involved.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Moore?
And, and it's interesting, I mean, it kinda relates, I'm sorry, to the next, the next question is that we were down to two-
Mr. Perry, let's finish.
Okay, we'll stay with this one.
Um, Ms. Moore?
Well, just to, on the heels of Councilwoman's comments, similar- Well, just to, on the heels of Councilwoman's comments, similarly, another one of my questions is, I'd like to see that report. I presume you're gonna share it.
The H.J.
Hyde? Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
And, to what extent, you know, we, we just had this discussion about this fantastic, state-of-the-art fire station building, you know, are we trying to put a square peg into a round hole by using an existing building? I have concerns about that, because of the whole history of City Hall, and let's not do something that we're gonna then, twenty years from now, have to change again. And so, there is an element, to me, a benefit of starting fresh, building ground up. I know there's price considerations in that, I, you know, like we've all been saying, there's a lot of moving parts and a lot of things we have to figure out, but those are the kind of comparisons for where we relocate that I would like to be able to, for us to have a educated conversation about.
Well, the, the time will come for that, for sure, and, and that's where I wanna posture it for you, is to be able to say, hey, this is an apples-to-apples comparison, as best it can be. But until you know what that building would cost and other associated comparators, I think it's difficult to make that assessment. So, that's why I'm trying not to get too far out on my skis, but to get far enough on the skis that I can give you information on where we're at on the mountain.
Obviously, there's a lot of professionals in certain fields up on this dais that know that if you don't know one thing, how do you decide on another? So, you've gotta know everything we can find out to get that next step. And I mean, that's, that's important, so, and, and again, sometimes you have to do a little due diligence, which might cost a little bit of money, to move to that next step, and it's not wasted money, it's money that's saying, okay, we don't wanna make that wrong decision and find out it's a money pit. So, you've gotta, you gotta do that, so. So, he's asking for, you know, a motion to approve him going forward on some more due diligence on some of this information, if I'm not with the City Hall.
That's correct. And specifically, on item B, I think it would be a motion to authorize me to approach the sellers regarding the term and price of the transaction to acquire that site, the Herald Building, subject to council approval, and contingent upon the sale of City Hall. That way, you would know between the H.J. Hyde report and this particular document, what, what the comparison is.
Should we include in that motion a directive to provide some kind of information regarding Sixth Street, and potentially even what, what we would be building if we went with Fourteenth Street, and the cost of that?
I'd have no objection to that.
To get all due diligence.
I think it should be all three.
Yep, yep, sure. So, is that a motion?
Sure.
I'll second it.
Alright. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote. Ward four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Approved five to zero. Thank you. Mr. Perry?
And finally, item C, discussion and motion regarding the negotiation in terms of the purchase and master development agreement regarding the considered disposition of City Hall with remaining proposers. I had addition, I had sent you all a letter late yesterday from Red Apple. I'd had a conversation with them, and they were rather, they were heading in a direction further clearly that indicated to me, based on our phone conversation, that they would be withdrawing their application. And I was pleasantly surprised, yeah, about yesterday afternoon, that they said that they would not withdrawing their, their application, that they're looking forward to trying to put together a proposal with artistic renderings, meeting the Bradenton artistic characteristics, as well as the mixed-use components, most of them, that were included in the initial solicitation. And so, what I'd like to do, again, not get too far out on my skis, but get to a point where I can go to these folks and say, listen, we've been at a point where the community has spoken, concerns about building heights, concerns about green space, concerns about parking, concerns about traffic, concerns about off-site infrastructure, and host of other things. So, can we hone down our proposal a bit, a little bit more specifically, that I can take to council? Because remember, I am gathering facts at this point. I am not ranking, I'm not evaluating, otherwise, that's for you all to do. But in order to rank, evaluate, and ultimately, either reject or, or select, you need that information. And right now, we have, as I can see it, two individual, two groups that, and I'm meeting with the third this afternoon, which would be Silver Hills, that, that are, have proposals that, that relate to mixed use, but I think we need to see how they plan to address those community concerns. And the third group being Silver Hills, their last proposal was mostly multifamily. And so, I'll be having a conversation with them. I just need authority, basically, to get those folks, basically, to refine their proposals more. And ultimately, it would come back to you, and one last point on that, and you, you can all figure out what to do from there. I mean, at that point, quite honestly, I can continue to negotiate and, and, and handle that, but from what I've seen before, it's a situation where your all's opinions regarding the, the, the value, and, and the wisdom, and the potential ranking or preference for any of those proposals, would really be at that point where I said, it's an issue of sophistication for us to get it there, and ultimately, political wear and fall and interest in doing it.
Ms. Coker?
And I get off the skis at that point, which I can't wait to do.
Hey, I, no, I'm just, if I'm understanding you correctly, are you just looking for authorization to call for highest and best from everybody?
Generally speaking.
Yeah. That's what, yeah, I'll make a motion to authorize the city administrator to call for the highest and best offers from all of the applicants.
With the information that we've heard through our public meetings.
I believe I have, I believe I have a motion in the package, and maybe we can modify it with those terms, if you'd like. I like those terms.
I know that highest and best is a realtor and land use.
Right.
But considering that we have many citizens out there that are concerned about building height, I, I want it clarified that you're not talking about.
I'm talking about money.
I, I understand that, but I just, I want that out there, if, because when people hear highest and best, they think you're talking about.
Oh, highest, yeah, highest.
Well, what I would say is that it's not for us to tell them. They, they, hopefully, they've been listening to our meetings, they've been going to the meetings, they've been listening, and so, it's up to them to give us.
Some have, some haven't.
Well, but then, but it's up to them to give us their highest price and their best offer.
Offer of, so, Mr. Perry, you have the motion?
So however you want it worded, but that's what I'm understanding.
I do, I've included in the agenda package a suggested motion to authorize the city administrator to discuss and negotiate terms of purchase and a master development agreement regarding the considered disposition of City Hall with remaining proposers. What I would ultimately do is go to them and say, let's talk about these particular provisions that you've heard from the public, that you've heard from the council, that you've heard from other people, and how would that fit into an MDA, a master development agreement? Because ultimately, that will be an important piece, I mean, it's kinda the transactional document, that will bind the developer with the expressions and interest and requirements of council. I mean, that's, that'll be the vehicle, the MDA. And, and so, we need to start talking with them about an MDA.
Ms. Coker, would you agree to that motion, and we'll get a second and one discussion?
The only question I have is, it looks like you're, are you negotiating with each one of them?
Yes.
Term of purchase?
Yes, because we don't wanna rank them yet.
Yeah, 'cause it almost sounded like you're just negotiating with the top, and, okay, but as long as we understand.
We have three left. Two self-selected out.
Right.
Yeah. Exactly. Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Coker?
I think I would, with all remaining proposers, I guess.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Alright, discussion, Ms. Moore?
Yes, please. I, I'm a little, I'm not comfortable with, with the vagueness of the motion, because I, I have specific things that I've shared with Mr. Perry that I think are pretty important, and I think they're important enough that I should use this space to convey them to you all. So, if I may, I would like to just kick it, kick off a discussion with the things that I feel are important, that should be addressed in any further negotiation with, and I like the amendment to include all of them. Mr. Perry is aware that it's my opinion that I wish there were more. I was very disappointed when Red Apple dropped out, because I think that in this market competition is healthy for us, and I would, I wish there were more.
But you understand, they have, they have taken that off the table, and they've asked to come back in.
Yes, yes, I do understand that. I was pleased to hear that. But, but my point, though, is that even with three, it's, you know, I mean, I, I desire for us to have as much leverage as possible in negotiations.
I feel like the amount of time it's taken could be part of it. We've lost two others, so.
But I'm not overly concerned with that, honestly, because I think that they will come. I mean, if, I don't think if we, I don't think if all the remaining three dropped out, that we would have to worry significantly. That's a risk I'm willing to take. I, I think that eventually, we will get to a place where we've been good stewards of the city property, and, and made good financial choices on behalf of the city. I'm, I think the risk is greater that we plug ahead for the sake of plugging ahead and make mistakes that have lasting impact. I'd rather, you know, I'm a, I'm a shoe, or a snow shoe skier, not, not going straight down the mountain, if that makes any sense, that analogy, I'm not a skier at all. So, in any event, my point, though, is, is that I'd rather methodically undergo this process than do something for the sake of doing it. In my opinion, the time where we have to beg developers to do anything here is way in the rearview mirror. We do not have to do that. I, I think we have more power than, than we may have historically thought we had. But that said, should I tell you all what my?
How, how would we get more bidders now, though?
I think we could put it back out. I don't think there's anything that prevents us to do that.
Well, but they also, if anybody was still interested, they could be coming to us.
They could be.
And they're not, and we put it out for ninety days, and we extended that normally to thirty or sixty, we put it out for ninety, got a lot of interest, and again, we've, again, you're new, so that's not blaming your, or doing, but we've been here through a lot of that.
Sure.
And, you know, some of the other things is, as we know, that, yeah, we can do anything, obviously, but it's been out there, and there was not, there was five people, two dropped out on their own, and three are still in. I was disappointed Red Apple dropped out as well, but I think, you know, they saw that it's, it's worth it. And if anybody else was out there, they're not beating down the door, so even though it's there, so.
I just, I don't know the reason for that. I'm sorry, did I interrupt you?
I thought you had something else?
No, I just, I, I'm, I'm just confused.
And again, this still does not mean it's approved.
Right. Oh, yes, no, I know.
Yeah, so it still can come back and, and maybe more drop out, once Mr. Perry negotiates with them, and then, we have to, to make a decision on that, so.
Would you like to hear the things that I shared with Mr. Perry?
Sure.
As my points of concern? Do you have any objection to that, Mr. Perry?
No, none at all.
These are just the things that were important to me, that I have shared with them, because I'm not allowed to share them with you legally, unless we're here.
This is the time to do it.
Regarding green space, I don't think it's, and I should preface that, the, the items, there's six, that I'm just gonna kick off a conversation with, in my opinion, do not warrant a price reduction. So, these are asks that I would like to make without any concession in purchase price. I think that it's, I love the.
Let me, let me interrupt you for one second. We're gonna have to have a hard break at eleven oh five till after, till lunch at one.
Okay.
So, do you wanna wait and do that when we come back? Because it's more than five-minute discussion.
Yeah, maybe we should, because I would also, you know, I, my thought is, I'd like to share the things I've shared with Mr. Perry, because I wanna hear what you guys think, too.
Yep, that's perfect, so.
Do you think it might be viable, just that we go through the list, and you can contemplate them at lunch? It might be helpful for others to hear that.
So, say this, can you just read the six off, and then we'll?
I think we're okay on time.
Yep, for that, yeah.
I'd like to retain or have some kind of permanent easement for what I call the lawn, not just the oak tree. I think that that would be a nice public space that could be tied into the, the end of the Riverwalk and the Bishop parking lot. I want to ask them to consider giving public parking for downtown, as well as the Marina, potentially, not just the parking that is necessary for the structure that they intend to build. We all agree, no incentives or abatements, but I think it's reasonable, much reasonable, to extend that notion to also requiring the inevitable infrastructure work for the existing roads, because I think that it's, I'm not a contractor, but I think it's pretty easy to see that Barracata and Twelfth, and maybe even to some extent Tenth, are going to suffer. You know, there's, there's gonna be some things that have to happen in the way of infrastructure because of the construction, and then because of the proposed use, that I don't think that the city should bear the burden of. Building heights, definitely, we have to discuss that. And then, oh, I saw Red Apple's re-entry into the game. I'd also just like to, to reiterate that I think having, I would like us to consider hotel space, because I think that with traffic patterns and dollar spending patterns, that could be an important piece of the puzzle in making it a successful project. Of course, bonding and having a project manager potentially for the city to manage a project of this size, because I, I can't stress enough that I think this project is huge, and bigger than anything that we've contemplated. And regarding a potential leaseback, I don't agree with doing that. That decreases the amount that we get. I don't think it's necessary. I don't think we're in a rush, and so, I'm opposed to any kind of leaseback with us paying for the space. That was just my initial.
Alright, thank you. We'll be recessed till one o'clock. So, we were in discussion, Mr. Perry, on your item C, kinda finalizing that, and we had Ms. Moore give six items that she was concerned with, and that's what it was, wasn't it?
That's what I said, and then, Mr. Kramer teased that it was more like eight.
Oh, was it? Okay. So, kind of a, kind of thinking about it now that we've had the time, kind of a path going forward that might be good, because, I mean, everybody's gonna have their own little things they wanna get into. One of the things that, this is just directed, Mr. Perry, to kind of start working with the three, to see what they're willing to do. Obviously, they've heard, and, you know, or they can get the information of what has been said at our meetings, we've got that on the flyer, Mr. Perry can pass it along. Also, this is a unique situation, that sometimes we can't talk about it with developers, because of quad judicial and that, but in this case, we can. So, they would have the ability to meet with you individually, and it might be a better way to give your thoughts to them, after Mr. Perry meets with them, and then they could set up meetings with each of you, and you could give them your own thoughts, because making a motion and adding all these things to it might be too onerous, from the standpoint of saying, well, this is my particular, this is my, you give it to them yourself, they can understand where you're coming from better, and that opportunity is there. So, I believe a motion is in order to give Mr. Perry that direction of moving forward, while setting up meetings, possibly with councilpeople that want to.
And just, I, I think it's important to recognize that there's six or eight from one counselor, you know, three or four from another, ten or twelve, which are all valid. Maybe what we could do is, if you have that six or eight, and, and you've already provided that to me in writing, I would basically just forward that on to all of the proposers to say, this is what we received from councilperson, ward four, councilperson, ward three. And, and, and again, there's no prohibition about talking with the developers, and I would hope that the developers are savvy and sophisticated enough to visit with you all, to basically say, you know, we know you have some concerns, this is what we're including in our proposal, this is what we can't include, whatever the situation might be.
There might be things that you can compromise with, or you feel like it's a win-win, you know? To me, sometimes height and green space could be trade-offs. There might be some trade-offs, that we get more positive out of something, you know, that, that, obviously, we know that what height they can legally go up to, but it's what height, we just each want them to, so.
And most of the comments, I mean, I, none of them were objectionable to me in any way. I would probably be talking with the, the proposers about that. But I probably do it under the auspices, I hope you've made enough of an investment of your time to realize what my council is, is interested in, from their comments on the dais or otherwise. And by and large, I think that they should be able to, to get that information. It's fairly, fairly out there with, you know, the height and.
They don't know it, it's on them.
Yeah.
So, I guess the chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, I'm kind of uncomfortable at us taking official action without the city attorney in, in the room.
He said to me that he didn't think that was a problem, and he would be here as soon as he could, but he, yeah, so he-
Well, if you've discussed it with him, then okay.
Yeah, no, I called, 'cause I said we were gonna have a motion for Rob to go forward, but he said-
Didn't, didn't we have the motion in a second, and isn't it a discussion point now? Didn't we?
Did we already have the motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, we're at discussion.
Discussion, so any further discussion?
Uh, let's see.
Yeah, Mr.-
Um, you mentioned, Mr. Perry, that Red Apple was in, then had spoken with you and had inferred they were gonna be out, and then they sent a letter. I know, I, you just touched on that, but for the people in the audience who didn't know, uh, Red Apple modified their projected proposal, um, to add 75 to 100 condominium units to the proposal of 240-plus multifamily rental units, 34,800 square feet of ground for retail space and parking.
That's correct.
So, that basically adds, their initial proposal was 450-plus, I believe, uh, just apartments.
Right, their written proposal was that?
Yeah, the retail is the same number, I believe, but the adding of the 75 to 100 now modifies a little bit what we've been hearing.
Yes, sir. So, I, I like the tone, the tenor and tone of their letter, too, that they were interested in working with counsel and, and the city to have a project that meets, you know, what we're, we're looking at trying to do.
And in fairness to some of the other developers who came to some of the meetings, they were met with hostility, not necessarily from, let's just say, everyone who was anti-development or anti-this project, but by certain individuals who targeted certain developers personally and, um, made it, so I believe some of those developers didn't wanna take away from the overall meeting tone.
I think it's important, too, to show the development community that, you know, we are open, but we are gonna have some ask that might be different than if them just coming, if they owned it totally themselves and were meeting the requirements of what our codes are. And our, Mr. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think it's important for the message to go out that when we started this process and we did a nationwide search, and we had five organizations get in touch with us, and then we had the, the informational workshop where in, they just basically came in and said, "We're a development company, and this is what we could put on this site." They had not gotten any direction from the council. We had not had too many, I think there may have been one or two, um, community meetings at that point, and we scheduled many after that. So, I, I think it's important, again, that the message go out that the council has a great deal of power and discretion when it comes to the plans that are going to be presented. If you are a savvy developer, you're going to get the information that has been pres-put out at all of these meetings, and the information that we as councilmembers heard when we were there, as well as information that has come in on the, um, our website where we're asking citizens to give us input. And I think that they need to have all of that information, and then they go back, and if they're smart, they pretty much will probably start from scratch and look at all of that input, all of that information, and see what could be done on this site. I know that there has been a lot of, of, um, expression that we don't, we don't necessarily want to be Sarasota or Tampa or, you know, a high urban area. We want it to look like Bradenton. And I know that there have been people that have been posting some of the very pretty pictures that we got at the very, at the initial informational meeting, saying, "This is what they're doing. This is not what we're doing." It was, it was an idea, it was a, something that was brought forward from different development groups, saying, "Well, we could do this, or we could do that, or we could do the other thing." It's just like, if any of us up here were going to be building a house, and we go to a contractor, and they might hand us a portfolio of the houses that they have built, but then when we sit down and talk with that person, we're going to say, if you're like me, "I want a big kitchen, and I want a big island in the kitchen, and I want it to be all on one level so I can age in place, being the elderly person that I am now." Um, so, so this is what we, as the, as the representatives of the citizens, that's, that's part of our, 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 our job, is to make sure that this information goes out to them, and what we get back in from them may be completely different from what they initially presented, and I don't have a problem with that. So, I just wanted to share that.
It's a good point, and I mean, to, to your point and to Counselor Gonzalez and Moore's point, you know, it's, it's interesting, if you owned a one-acre lot on the water and you were selling that lot, and when you sell it, the, the, the purchaser has to comply with zoning and building codes, basically, but here, because we are putting terms on there that are restrictive and prescriptive and have requirements and the like, um, we could, we could be as prescriptive and restrictive and limiting as much as possible, and the value of the, the property goes down. Can you imagine if I was selling that to, that, that one-acre parcel? I said, "I only, we're gonna sell it to you under the terms that you buy a, you build a two-car garage, and I only want it one, be one-story, and you can only have two bedrooms, and by the way, I want this type of style." Well, obviously, my buyers are gonna dry up, because there's not gonna be as many buyers that are just buying a piece of property that they're accustomed to and building within the codes. We have a great deal of, of, of ability to, uh, to, to basically create the, the project that we want, but realize there's a balance, because if we become too demanding in those things, then the purchasers are gonna go, "Well, why should I pay this amount of money, or why should I engage in this transaction with you?" And, and the like, and, I, I mean, it, it's free market. It, it really is, and there's a, there's a fine balance. I think your points are well-taken, that, that we do have authority to do that stuff, that we are trying to listen to the public's voice, that we are mindful of the, the standards, the history, the use of, of Bradenton, this particular area of Bradenton and the like, and at the same time, we're trying to put together a package and a proposal that accommodates that and also accommodates, um, future development and quality of life and enhancement in the future of the city. That's what we're trying to do, and, and, but it's a free market. That, that one-acre parcel of land, if I become so prescriptive, nobody's gonna buy it. Councilwoman Coker, is a realtor, am I wrong?
No.
Council, just, uh, Councilwoman Coker, um, did you have something?
Well, I just, um, I think that in looking at my crystal ball, um, I, I see that we've got a choice. We either gotta do this, i- if we don't do it, I see a real problem down the road. I think the growth will still continue, and there'll be continued to build in Parrish and Palmetto and all out east, and those people are still gonna be coming down here for jobs, and then the traffic's gonna get worse, and then eventually the traffic will get so bad, well, they're gonna quit, the businesses are gonna quit losing the workers, and then the businesses are gonna move out east, and the next thing you know, downtown's dying. And there's no one living downtown, no one to take care of anybody downtown, service the hotel, the hospitals, and then the hospital decides to go out east. I, I mean, we, I, I think that a lot of the challenges that we have heard from people are, are actually why we need to do this. And yes, it's not the magic bullet that's gonna solve everything, but I think a lot of the problems we have now are from the people that didn't make some tough decisions 30 years ago on another bridge, or on the flyover, or whatever, and so I feel like it's, it's time, I've, I've, I'm in favor of it, and, uh, so I call the question.
Have a question called, is there a second?
I think there's a few more people that wanted to add something.
Okay. Sorry.
But let's do it right, you always tell me to do it right.
Absolutely.
There was a question called, "Is there a second?" Hearing no second, that dies because of a lack of a second. Mrs. Moore.
Um, just to that point, uh, I am in favor of it, too, but I, again, I just wanna make sure it's done right. And to your point, Mr. Perry, about potentially losing buyers, coun- uh, conflict council and the, that initial workshop said that we could put it out, we could direct you to put it back out to bid. So, I just wanna make sure today, I am okay with us negotiating and talking to the current bidders, but I wanna make sure that we're not limiting ourselves in that regard, because to the extent that eventually we become at, uh, you know, we get to a head and we can't compromise on something, I wanna be able to make sure that we could put it back out to bid, and to the point about too many restrictions, then we'll know. If we can't come to an agreement with these three, and we put it back out to bid, and no one shows up, well, then I guess my magic ball was wrong, and I have to now go back and see if someone is interested with some concessions that I'll have to make. But again, while I'm in favor of it, I think the risk of us moving forward quickly and making a mistake is bigger than the risk that we methodically proceed and potentially lose, you know, one or two or three of these particular bidders.
And, and I think that's, you know, valid points from, it's not quickly for a lot of us.
Right.
For me, it's been a lot of years, um, talked about, probably seven or eight, and, and of course, seven or eight years ago, I didn't think it was the right time to do it, because the building hadn't hit the end of life, all of the things that are happening hadn't hit, the market wasn't there, some of the things, you know, so I don't disagree with some of the stuff that, as far as getting the information, but obviously, you know, we've gotta vote, we're gonna have to do something eventually, and we did put it out for a long time, longer than that we were advised to do for, and we had the thousands of hits. So, it's not like we went to a secret market and only got five. We went to thous-, there was 20-some, Cory, maybe you can remember? But it was in the twenties. Yeah, but it was in the twenties-something, I think, looks at the website. So, it wasn't that it was just, you know, a few people and they didn't get a chance. And again, we know in today's market, if there was somebody else interested, they would be coming and knocking, because they see that we're there, but also, some of our past, and I'm not saying are, but our city's history is because of the dysfunction sometimes that happened, that some of them, "I don't even wanna deal with them." You know, and that happens in a lot of different areas, so, you know, I think, you know, we've got an opportunity to listen to three people. Mr. Perry, go in the direction here, then as well as, everything's correct on our thoughts, Robin, that we can all talk to them. You know, there's no, no individual moratorium on talking to the developers, so you can give them your thoughts. Obviously, they're gonna get Ms. Coachman's thoughts, Ms. Coker, Ms. Barnaby, and Mr. Kramer, and then they're gonna have to evaluate what they come up with, and so I think that's the, I think, again, we could talk this to death again, but I think we're in a good direction, at least giving the opportunity, and then it comes back. Nothing is decided today. It's a matter of saying, "Okay, here, we're moving this direction," and all of a sudden, the three, you know, who knows? One may pull out again. We don't know, but once they see the direction. We know that, I'm glad that Red Apple came back in, because it does show that maybe there is a little more interest on their, I was disappointed in their presentation when they came here. I mean, I don't think they did anything, but I think they were living in the past, thinking that it's a rubber stamp. Nothing's a rubber stamp, it's a matter of saying, "Give, but you gotta give us a presentation." If that's the only thing there, then that, maybe that's it, but, but that's my thought, so. Um, anyone else? So, we have a, did you have some?
I, I just wanna say, I see your point. You know, the more the merrier, so to speak, at least the more of an opportunity to really find what you want. We're down to three, hoping that we can find, you know, what's best, um, and, but I understand what you're saying, you know? If two drop off, then we're kinda just stuck with one. I don't know what the magic number would be. Um, I'm, I'm hearing that it was presented, you know, for a period of 90 days, or, um, and it was out there for the taking, so to speak, and if we did, like, reopen it again, whoever might take a bite, they've got a lot of, they've gotta play a lot of catch-up, it seems, so. I see your point, but we, we have three that maybe we can beat them down, no.
I do see in my notes, we have a, a motion by Ms. Coker, seconded by Ms. Barnaby, to approve letting Mr. Perry move forward.
May I just ask, does this preclude us, are we, are we moving to say that we're ultimately going to call a vote on one of these three in particular?
No, 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 this is just-
Not today. Okay, well, or, or I just, I don't wanna limit us, is basically my thought.
This does nothing, 'cause this, everything has to come back.
Okay.
This isn't doing anything. This is just giving him to start, and then now, what's come out of this discussion is that it might be good for, if the developers want to, they may not wanna get with you.
They may not.
And that's, and I'm not saying you, I'm just saying with the individual, but if I was, if I was a betting man, they're all gonna wanna have your ear, 'cause they can. So, all right, so, motion and a second, and any further discussion?
I would just say, Mr. Mayor, that I will probably put my thoughts in writing and give it to Mr. Perry. Um, I am not interested in meeting with them individually.
So, that's each counselor's choice.
And, and I'll, I'll refine that to, to, we, we've gotten some difference of opinion about that issue, as far as, um, the wisdom of doing that and the like, so I think if you have any thoughts, let's just proceed with, if you can provide them to me, and I will pass them on to the proposers, and I will get clarification as far as any meetings, and we might wanna do them in a further workshop.
Yeah, to be safe, all right. All right, so we have a motion and a second, and we're gonna start the vote in a word five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four? Carrie's five to zero. Mr. Perry, any unfinished business that you know of?
Quickly, I handed out a letter from, uh, from the clerk of the Circuit Court of Manatee County, Angel Colnesso, oh, Colnesso, and, uh, this is for the, the Carnegie Historical Records Library, that of course the city owns and is under, under a long-term, um, lease agreement, use agreement with the county. Uh, the clerk is concerned about the, the openings on the windows and the like, and the library being an older structure and having such important historical records for the city and the county and the area, uh, that we protect it from hurricane potential damage from hurricane events, and so they have basically went out and gotten a quote and a contract to do hurricane shutters, basically, for 38 openings into the building. Um, I had spoken with, with, uh, their office and said, "I don't think we would have a problem with doing that since you're paying for it and, uh, everything, however, um, I don't, I wanna make sure it's funded by the county." I didn't want it to be a switch where it was bought for the county saying, "Well, it's the city building, and we wanna make repairs because we might wanna modify the lease and the like." And so, I was assured that isn't the case, it is within the budget, and there's a guarantee of, of payment for the invoice. We are the, the owner, and so that's why the contractors are requiring that we basically authorize the purchase of those shutters.
Would there be any architectural review of that from the architectural review board?
I don't think so. I, I don't know how that works, to be honest with you.
Well, it's not, it's, it's something they put up and take down during a hurricane.
The tracks, okay.
Yeah, but I don't, you know, what I saw it as is, you don't even know, you probably don't understand there. I wouldn't imagine that it's those clear match track, so it's whatever that says.
Yeah, the corrugated panels-
They're not gonna be there permanently, they're just in case of an emergency.
The tracks will be there.
Well, but, I mean, you can't really... What's, what's, what's our option? We, we tell them not to put hurricane windows up when there's a hurricane, and then our historical-
Well, the option is that you would do hurricane windows, which is considerably more expensive. I'm just saying, that is probably, from the aesthetics of a historical building, that's all I'm saying.
I think it's a good point.
But I'm, that's fine.
So, is this a motion, Mr. Perry?
Yes, I'd ask for authorization to basically permit, uh, the contractor to install the hurricane shutters, which are clear tech corrugated panels with clear matching tracks, um, that are unpainted over the windows and the door, and that the cost associated with the project would be paid by the clerk's office.
Mr. Perry?
Yes, ma'am.
At one point, I heard you say, "It's okay, it's in the budget."
It's, it's in the county budget.
It's not ours, okay.
Right.
I wanted to make sure it was in their budget.
Clerk's office question.
Okay.
I didn't wanna get in a situation where they say, "Well, the, the city was asking for this."
Yeah, yeah, okay. It's in their budget.
And again, there's gonna be some other things that we need to probably drill down on really soon about-
Right.
Having some sort of-
What to do.
Long-term-
Long-term plan.
Plan for that building with the reverter clause or something that has kinda got stalled for whatever reason, I don't know yet, but.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanna make sure that these are shutters that are put up and taken down, they're not permanently installed over all the windows.
And we do have-
I think that's a problem with our fire code.
Just the tracks.
Yeah, that, that's what they appear to be to me, I haven't seen the drawings.
Now, Mr. Perry, we do have Ms. Dolan in the office.
Oh, do we? Federer, do you wanna come up and maybe talk about that? I didn't see you over there, Federer, I'm sorry.
Which is the great historian-
Good afternoon, Federer Dolan, Director of Historical Resources for the Manatee County Clerk's Office, and yes, these are going to be on, the tracks will be permanently installed on- And yes, these are going to be on, the tracks will be permanently installed on the building. We have asked for them to color-match them to the brick on the building so that it will be as, at the least obtrusive nature as possible. And then these will be the clear panels that will go up in advance of a storm, and then they will come down after a storm. So no, this is not a permanent, except for the tracks where they actually have to prop those panels in and secure them. We really wanted to stay away from having any sort of modern fixture applied that would be obvious. We respect the historical integrity of that building as well. So we wanted to make sure that this was gonna be the least invasive measure possible to protect our county's historical records going back to eighteen-fifties. So we wanted to do, take responsibility, make sure that these things are protected going forward, but do it in a manner that's not going to cause a large visual disturbance to the historical character of the building. Did you have any other questions that I can answer for you?
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions? Is there a motion to authorize the clerk of the courts?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four? Five?
Yes.
Thank you. Carrie's unanimously. Mr. Perry?
Can I be excused to go to the next meeting? I think I'm through with our business.
Yeah. We're our next one? We're all going to, we're all going to the-
Couple of things I wanted to talk. Lead advance work, I usually would do it in advance, but unfortunately.
Yes, sir. All right, so council reports?
Thank you.
Start in Ward, yeah, start in Ward four. Council report starts in Ward four.
Oh, I'm sorry. I will just report that I met with the, the lovely people at the Reflections of Manatee Museum in Ward four and learned quite a bit about what they do in addition to, you know, being adjacent to the new park and whatnot. So I just encourage everyone to check out their website and calendar for upcoming events. They're trying to really branch out into the community and have a little bit more of a presence.
And if you donate five hundred dollars, you can become a lifetime member.
Oh, that's great.
As Jean and Gina Brown are.
See, she did not even tell me that part. But I thought I had one other thing, but I'm spacing out and we're late on time, so I'll let everyone move on.
All right, thank you. Ward five?
So much has happened, and I can't put all my thoughts together right now, but great discussions today. I learned a lot. And I'm looking forward to the groundbreaking in just about half an hour. And Ward five is alive.
Yeah, Ward one.
Okay, just a couple of things. First off, my condolences to the McCray family, Colin McCray, who passed away this past weekend. Hal and John Cena are such great members of this community, so my condolences to the, to the family. I had a great opportunity this past weekend through Kiwanis to participate in the Key Leader Weekend. We had twenty middle school and high schoolers there working, doing leadership, communications skills. It was a great opportunity. It was very impactful even on me with the kids. So I wanted to give them a shout-out. We're gonna do this again next year. Would encourage everyone to, to anybody that knows middle school or high school kids, this is gonna be a great resume builder, applications for college.
Are you talking about for the kids?
Yeah, for the kids. Yeah, yeah. But no, I'm just, we had a hard time getting the kids to, to sign up this year, and I'm hoping, 'cause it was a first-year project, that next year, we've gotten a lot of positive feedback. And then I'm having a little bit of an issue with our recycling dumpsters over at GT Bright. I think you've gotten some calls, but they're doing a lot more than just recycling being dumped there. I was there last night. They were full. I couldn't leave my stuff. But the, there was a box full of construction debris, it looked like, a window and stuff like that. And there happened to be the name of the person on the Amazon box. But I, I'm, I'm wondering if we should, I don't know, video the people that are going there or somehow, because it is starting to get a little out of control. And I don't know what the answer is.
So we can have Jim come up with something maybe, or trail cams or?
I have pictures of the Amazon box. Just saying.
Assuming it was-
Yeah, it may not have been.
All right, thank you, Ward two.
Well, just to piggyback on that, if you have one of the blue household bins, please do not bring it to the, the areas where the blue recycle bins are. If you need it, if you don't want it and you need it picked up, please call Public Works and they will come and pick it up. I'm having a problem at Lewis Park with people taking the bins over there. And then people are thinking that, "Oh, we can use these bins too," and they're putting garbage and yard waste in them. So we need to nip that in the bud. If you want the recycle program to continue, you need to do it cleanly and appropriately. We can't take lawn chairs. We can't take pieces of plastic furniture. There, there is very plainly marked on the bins what you can, what you can do and what you can't. So, again, police yourselves and do what, what needs to be done to keep the program going. I wanted to thank the Bradenton Police Department for their assistance over at Old Westfield Park. We had quite a situation going on over there, but the, the police have been patrolling and coming in, and the neighbors have noticed, and they wanted to say thank you. Also, Thirty-third Street Court West, if, with apologies to Mrs. Collins in sixth grade and Mrs. Parrish at Manatee High School, I'm just gonna say it this way, ain't nobody happy about it at all. And we're trying to get it done as quickly as possible, so, you know, please understand anytime you have a project that involves federal money, there's always more layers of bureaucracy that you have to deal with. I wanted to also extend my, my condolences to the McCray family on the loss of their son, and also to the Eason family on the death of Dewey Eason. Dewey was a proud member of our community and did a lot of good working in the community as a volunteer, particularly with the Manatee Fair Association. And he, he will be missed. I feel like a mighty oak has fallen, and he will be missed. And just one more thing. It's Girl Scout cookie time. Girl Scout cookie time. Many of you know I was a professional Girl Scout and worked for two different councils, and even had Girl Scout cookies at my wedding reception. So if you, if you don't have a Girl Scout in your neighborhood, if you call Gulf Coast Council at 1-800-232-4475. That's 1-800-232-4475. They will be happy to make sure that, that you can purchase your cookies. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. I wanted to say thank you to the department heads and all their staff. I liken my position to being a traffic cop up here on council where I take complaints this way and I pass them off to the department heads, specifically code enforcement, Jim with Public Works, and Chief Bevan and her staff in the back. I'm sure I'm coming to you Fire Department next. But your, your staffs, I always say, are the reason we're up here and make sure everything is done as best as possible for them. So thank you for their hard work. And I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge my esteemed colleagues up here and all the other female staff on this International Women's Day. So thank you. I know where my bread's buttered, don't worry. Thank you to, yeah, to all of you for your guidance and tutelage. Even you, Lisa. You're, you're, we're new, but, but thank you all for everything and keeping things going. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Obviously, sending along the condolences, obviously, to the Eason family and then the McCray family. Obviously, the, what Dewey and his whole family did for changing the sign world and, in the world, and starting the big sign company here in town many years ago with a group of people, kinda, you know, brought us into that new future of how signs would look, I think, as you go. But, but great family to be around, and obviously, you know, his wife is still alive and his children, so. And then also the, with baseball, being here right now and everything going on, McCray family, you know, great baseball, and you know, was one of the coaches, head coaches before with the Rays, Devil Rays in those days, but, you know, so they touched a lot of people in the community, and it's, it's, those parents are suffering right now from losing their son. So we, we send along condolences for that. But don't forget, go out and see a baseball game, but be patient in the afternoon. There might be some traffic. The good part about the new baseball rules is the games are getting over a lot earlier, so the traffic is subsidizing sooner. Spit that out. Yes, subsidizing sooner, which is nicer because the games are getting over by about 3:30 instead of 4:30, which is the worst time. But, but just keep, keep the patience, and we're gonna, we're still working on everything we do, so appreciate that. We'll go to department heads. Chief?
Do you keep hash marks about who you called most? I'd like you all to start doing that.
You have twenty-two seconds left.
You're not winning.
Um, just real quickly, we sent out an email to you all. You should have seen it. We're gonna do a soft open house at what's formerly known as the Girl Scout House. And so on the heels of its Girl Scout cookie season, we have invited them to attend. Hopefully, they're gonna be there. And we're gonna put out a press release that really just encourages any community group that wants to come out and see if it may be a good fit for their organization to hold meetings. Obviously, it, it will be restricted to a degree because we also do some police operations in there. That's where the traffic folks are hold out of, but our goal is to make this a community cop's house. So any ideas? Let us know. We, we actually really hope the Girl Scouts return to us. And so that's really it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other department heads? No issues? All right, we will be adjourned at-